All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the Select Board meeting for November 1st, 2022 to order. It is 6:02 in the evening. And can I get somebody to...
Motion to...
Yeah. Go ahead.
Not to re... Yeah. Not to read the Zoom instructions.
Second.
Rule call?
Nichols' eye.
Waitman's eye.
Benoit's eye. Just checking in case one of our members was online. I don't see him.
Motion to approve Treasury warrant 23-9 and payroll 23-PW9.
Waitman's seconds.
Rule call?
Clark's eye.
Nichols' eye excluding any COA wages.
Waitman's eye.
And Benoit's eye.
Motion approved minutes, meeting minutes of October 17th, 2022, and October 21st, 2022, and October 27th, 2022, as written.
Second.
If I may, we can do 1017 and 1027 together, but we can't do 1021 because there were two members missing. So we'll have to separate them.
Could you separate them all because I have a correction?
Okay, then let's do October 17th, 2022.
Second.
Tamika, on the fourth page, number 20, excuse me, 92, where it says that Mike Moriarty, Gary Keller, Carol Benoit met with the town of Barry. It was actually all the towns of the INA met.
Oh, okay.
So, that correction.
Yeah, I think the confusion was that we only had Barry's to sign that night, but we needed to sign everybody's.
I figured that was...
Approved with amendment.
Second.
Rule call?
Clark's eye.
Waitman's eye.
Nichols' eye.
Benoit's eye.
Approve October 21st, 2022 minutes, as written.
Second.
Rule call?
Clark's eye.
Nichols' eye.
Waitman's staying.
Perfect, thank you.
I usually just go last because my name ends with a W.
Yeah.
I've been used to it. I just wanted you to know.
I am confused because we're going in a row.
I know.
Whatever works for you.
Approve October 27th minutes, 2022.
Second.
Rule call?
Clark's eye.
Nichols' eye.
Waitman's eye.
And Benoit's eye, thank you. Okay, I'd like to open it up for public comment if we have any tonight. Going once, going twice. Quick, move on. We have department head updates, we have Carrie from the library, and then we'll have Joe from DPW. Carrie, cue the moment. No, she was in the building.
Oh.
We can start with you, Joe, if you're good with that, and see what she's finishing up. Okay?
Sure. Anybody, I'm still up with the DPW. There's some new faces here. Update for DPW. Currently, all funded physicians at DPW are built. There's no major equipment failures at this time. I'm going to try and give you a breakdown by division. The garage staff just completed vehicle inspections and made associated repairs. And they're currently working on sand and plow repairs to get ready for the winter. Highway staff are busy filling potholes, making catch basin repairs, and some tree work. We've completed our gravel road work for the year, mostly on brittle. Water staff are continuing to produce around 300,000 to 350,000 gallons a day. We completed a leak survey and made a lot of those associated repairs. There's still a couple going. We finalized the drought management plan and the risk and resilience plan. We also recently met with our wire consultant, Weston Sampson, and we're working on finalizing designs for Sunnyside and Edson water main replacement and a residuals management plan. That has to do with the plan. On the sewer side of the house, we're working with RH Wyper address problems at the Grizzly Station. We recently made significant repairs to the station at Central Tree Middle School. We continue to clean buildings every day. Just a quick update. We just completed a, I forgot to mention on the sewer stuff, we just completed repairs to the DCR trunk sore. For those who don't know, regarding the DCR trunk sore, if DCR were to actually repair them, they pass those bills on to us. So we'd have to pay them. We found significant leaks in the line, and they estimated it would take them five years to make the repairs. We did them in about three months because that's money for us. So we're negotiating with DCR and do all the work on, you know, in-house. Not in-house, we hired a contractor and got the work done. So hopefully, long-term, we'll reap benefits from that because you'll have less water in the line. Just a couple of quick things on snow and ice. I know nobody wants to talk about it, but it's coming.
I do, I do.
Brining is back this year. We have roughly between 13 and 14 plow routes that we staff. Eight town staff cover plow routes and five hired trucks. Some up, I'm just going to give you a couple snippets on some upcoming projects. Palmegusset Road, the chip job is out for bid. We have a good chunk of Chapter 90 money tied up in that, and we're probably going to use a lot next season. But there is a chance we may be able to get some of it back through a grant for the dam work. We had a community compact grant that you guys have prepared with a pavement management plan. We recently updated the pavement management plan. Because at the time we had done it, Palmegusset wasn't paved, 68 wasn't paved. And what we were able to do is take credit for all those and at the same time update the software. So whenever we do do paving, we can update it. So, once we get the, once the consultant finishes updating the pavement management plan, we'll come up with some ideas to hold more payments. Some other upcoming projects, Rutland Community Center Roof is going up a bid, and we should have that contract signed in a week or so. Library roof repairs have been designed, and that's, we'll probably get that done hopefully before it gets cold. And we have a design for public safety coming. We're doing some significant covert lining on Wachesett Street at the Princeton Town Line. That's going to, and that's an incision repair or repair done in place, and then we don't have to close the road. And that's about it. We've also done some signage on Campbell, I think everybody's aware of that. Some housekeeping items, yard waste this week. If anybody wants to come in on Saturday, we're there from 8:00 to 1:00 to drop off leaves. Sand is now available for the public if you want to get some sand to make sure you don't get stuck in your driveway. And water and sewer bills went out, possibly maybe some folks may already have them. Before I forget, though, when we met to plan for the next Fall of Town meeting, we talked about the Miles Road pump station. This is the service area. So I've got one for all of you folks.
Thank you.
It's roughly 20% of the town sewer system or just over 250 parsons, including Deveraux.
So it's both of those, sorry.
Everything in pink goes through the Miles Road station.
So it's both the neighborhoods on either side of Palmegusset, both?
Yes. Our research was off. We originally thought it was the late 50s that the force main was installed. It was the late 60s that the force main was installed. Thought by ten years. So it's a pretty big service area. The pipe is broken twice. That's, it's the biggest, it sees the most flow of any pump station we have.
Thank you for closing that.
And again, it doesn't, it's not going to cause a back at somebody's house. It's not going to do anything like that. If the pump station, the force main breaks, it ends up in Fair Pond. That's an environmental problem, and we don't want that either. Okay?
Great.
Thank you.
Joe, do we have all of the, oops. Do we have all of the plowers that we, people that we need to plow this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
You mentioned numbers, I was just making sure that we had it.
We have eight town personnel plowing.
Town people and five hires.
Five hired.
Perfect.
The five hired were all committed by the end of September.
Excellent.
We gave them an incentive of an extra $2.50 an hour if they committed by the end of September, and we got five trucks.
Great.
Almost all of them were from last year's.
Great. I just see the DOT, Mass DOT is hiring, so I was like, making sure we got our five.
We started at the end of August.
Thank you. All right. Does anybody have any questions for Joe? Thank you so much.
Joe, if I may, sorry. I think that the pump station stuff conversation has kind of, it's been one in the back of my mind. We have a lot of pump stations in town, and I think that they, we have five. And I know that they, we, as a town, accept them. And I don't have, like personally, an idea as to the age of any of them, where they all are and the age of them, and if there's any sort of planning for, what, I don't know what type of maintenance they require, if any ongoing maintenance, or at what point we could or should plan for a more catastrophic repair or something. It's not something I need right away, but I think that that's something that is kind of always in the back of my mind. And I don't know how the rest of the board feels about just having that information and trying to come up with a, work with you and sewer to figure out a plan or at least an understanding as to what we have, and...
We do.
Okay. I figured you did, but I know, like I said, I know that they're, we accept them as town meeting, and then they become town's responsibility, and I just want to make sure that there's...
On average, with the exception of one or two, they're all about 20 years old. So the rule of thumb is if you have a 20-year-old car, stuff starts to work. They are inspected daily, five days a week, unless we have skated and keep an eye on it to make sure they keep working. We have some thoughts on what we want to replace over time. Almost all of them are, how do I explain it? Everything in the station is double. So what that means is if you have a pump pit, you usually have another one. You can run it on one, not ideal, but almost they're all, they're all set up that way.
Okay.
We do have a capital plan.
Yeah.
And we do have some energy-saving stuff that we apply for as well.
I just, I guess, also thinking a little bit more broadly is we've, we hear a lot that the state has, potentially has a lot of monies, opportunities for infrastructure especially. I think a lot of roads, but also other infrastructure. And if there's any way that we know that we can plan for some of that, I, we hear it has to have plans in hand, ready to go, and everything. But is there a way that we can capitalize on some of the grant opportunities that...
That's what we force them.
Right.
That's why we are on currently paying for design. Give us some idea of what it's going to cost us, and if something is available.
Right. But looking more broadly, not just at this one because we know, but, you know, yeah. Okay, thank you.
More on the drinking war than on the...
Yeah, but, like I said, the pump stations are always in the back of my mind, just because... What's his name?
No, I don't remember. The war.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Queers in the, I forget the name of the state program, but they do a survey to ask what cities in town that has like stormwater, wastewater, and water. We did complete that study, it's gone in on time. Sometimes the state produces more funding, associated stuff like that, and sometimes they don't. But we did make all of our needs known. No...
Yeah.
See if I can get you a copy of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Carrie?
Okay, so, updates on the library. We recently, just last week, had two of our light poles replaced in the back parking lot. Someone had smashed into one and knocked it right down in April. So we filed a claim with the insurance. I couldn't tell you who it was because I came to work and it was laying down there in the back parking lot. And it looked like the other one had been hit by a plow or two or three. So they came last week and replaced the two poles. They actually did me a favor too and put a light bulb in one of the poles that had a light out, and they fixed the little bonnet that went on top, so that was good. I'll get the bill and I'll send it to Meebup so that she can deal with it through insurance, I think. I think that's a deductible also. We have a dumpster coming tomorrow for, the Boy Scouts are helping clean out the back room so we can be ready for the Smithsonian. We have those big crates that have to be stored back there. What else? We just had our Halloween thing, so there was a lot of activity here on Saturday. A lot of little children, big sale, membership drive, very, very busy, very active. Plus an Halloween lady, the Smithsonian is coming, that's where we're at. So, anybody have any questions for me?
Not to get personal, but what kind of things are being thrown away? There's nothing, there's nothing included that needs to go through the process of...
We've had a pile of electronics, old computers, old printers, and junky stuff out there probably for about 15 years. That's gone. There's still some paint and other building materials that have been here since we built this building, which was built in 2000. So we're getting rid of that. The dumpsters company that Joe hooked me up with will take all of that stuff, and the Boy Scouts are willing to do a service project, so that's awesome.
And the electronics, does that not fall under the municipal disposition or whatever?
They told me put it in the dumpster. That's what they told me. So I said, "Okay, I'm not going to worry about it."
So you know we've, we've got those kind of things around the build, around the town, so, okay.
Right, right.
Interesting, all right.
What do you want to know about the Smithsonian?
You could say the dates so that anybody watching could know.
Okay, so the Smithsonian Museum is coming and will be open for business from December 18th to January 28th. It'll probably come the week before, we'll assemble it. This Friday, I'm meeting with Jen Atwood, who is the Mass Humanities person, and she's going to help me fill out or guide me through the filling out of the paperwork process so that we can get our first dispersment. We get $10,000 from the Smithsonian for this event. We have to do some matching funds, but in-kind and, you know, my docents and all the other people that will be involved in all of this will probably, it's going to be almost a wash, I think. I mean, we'll probably have to come up with a few thousand dollars, but I don't, it's a great problem to, you know, to pass some funding. And they've already spent a little money on printing that we put a mail route in. The Best of the Trees mail, if we restore the society saying the Smithsonian is coming. So, whenever that goes out, I'm thinking it went out today or it's going out tomorrow. So everybody should stand to see, the Smithsonian is coming. We are just kind of nailing down our dates and our programs to accompany that. We have to have six programs accompany it, and one of them has to be a, a community conversation. But I think we're actually going to have a couple of that community conversations, which will be really entertaining and really informative, I think.
Great.
We're very excited about it.
Great. I know that one of the questions was transportation for, to the next town. Did, did she get back to you about that? I'm just checking to see...
That would be something that the 300th, Sherry Hager was talking about that, of course, we would really like to, you know... Only six communities in Massachusetts are receiving this. This is a huge honor for this community. And when I spoke with Jen Atwood, we went to Essex, four of us went to Essex to put the display together for Essex. They were the first community in Massachusetts to receive it. Boy, what a day that was. It's rolling, it's a lot of work, but it was way fun. And so my question to all of them was, how many communities applied for this grant? Because I wanted to know where we stood. And they said 19 communities, and Rutland was the strongest application. We are probably the only community that literally had the space, and because of the 300th and because of all the letters of support, we were put on the list.
Fantastic.
So we're way excited about that.
Fantastic.
So it's a big deal for Central Mass.
You're right, there's a difference between being one of six, of six, or one of 19.
One of six.
That's great.
Of 19, and there were probably about 220 communities that could have applied for it.
That's great. Thank you.
And we're working together, the 300th, May, and Sheila Danpuel, applied for the grant, is a consultant. So I'll be meeting with her, I think, sometime this week, and Jen Atwood is coming on Friday. There's floor plans, so we're going to put them on the floor and see how situated the best. We're excited about that. Question?
If I may, for the setup of that, do you need help? Is it, do you have designated people already? Okay, I was...
One of the things that, you know, when we all went, they were, we had, they had to send a minimum of two people from each community that was getting, that was receiving this. And no more than five. We sent four, there were four of us that went. And so they asked us after we were done setting these up and the whole thing. They said, "So what'd you learn?" And we decided that there were way too many people there. We could have probably done it with a third of the amount of people there. So we figured that maybe 10, 11 people talks for that. We'll need DPW to help us get those crates in here, and that'll probably be all the help we'll really, you know, we'll, we'll get a little, get a little team here and get this thing together and... So unfortunately, that means meeting space is off the table for six, probably seven weeks. Which is during the dead of winter, and that's something else we talked about, I talked about with this committee. We're in the middle of the winter, most people don't particularly care to go out after dark. So we're going to have a lot of events on Sunday afternoons so that we can get the community here and have these events, you know, being well attended.
So I just had a thought, I don't know how much they cost, but a vinyl banner for, on the common or something, that Smithsonian is coming to town.
Randy Jordan actually suggested we get the old sign that we used to have. Do we still have that, Joe? The old electronic sign where you could type in stuff? If we put it right out here in the front of the, in front of the library on the farm in out there saying the Smithsonian is coming with the dates, that would be a good way to get things going. And as we get more events, we can stop throwing those on there.
We did a lot of this for you at the time.
Okay. All right, I don't care, wherever, wherever you think it'll get the most.
It is kind of scary looking, but it does work.
But that, that was Randy Jordan's suggestion, which I thought was actually brilliant.
Thank you.
But the banner does sound good, like... We did talk about that, didn't we, Sheila?
We did.
We did, we did talk about that, yes. So we could do that, too.
We're seeing the cost.
I mean, we got a printer who did all those, if you, please with them. If not, I have a bit of a connection with the printer and we'll yeah.
Hi.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Gina Pierce, Executive Director with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. I just have a question for Karen.
Sure.
On that sign, was that obtained through the, was that obtained through Home and Security funds years ago? Do you know if it's still working? Okay, because if you don't use it, the batteries die, so, okay. Before you plan to use it, you find out that it's not working.
Use it for the...
Thank you for that, Gina.
We're hearing from communities 20, you know, 15 years later, they haven't used it, and, yeah.
But it's brand new, we haven't used it.
It was just used for the...
Because I was going to say, they're regional, so if you needed others, I'm sure a town will...
Well, Randy actually said that. He was pretty sure Hole-in-the-Fire or Police Department still had theirs, so we could reach out to them if we need to, blah, blah, blah. I knew that, I knew that, Joe, I knew.
Sorry about that.
No.
Just in case you waited until the last minute and it didn't work.
This stuff is appreciated.
Information is appreciated, yes. Yes, I wish somebody told us. Anything else that...
Well, I wanted to briefly talk about the articles that I have some information. And I, I have to say, I did reach out to the procurement officer for Massachusetts, and he gave me a fab data price than I had. So I'm going to hand one to Karen and I'm going to hand one to you. And the copying machine, so this is, we're saving about $3,000, Karen?
This is the same one we had.
Hmm?
This is the same one we had.
Is it the one you had?
Yep.
Are you sure?
Yep.
Let me see.
11-4-11-7.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I gave it, I apologize for that, I gave it...
I'm like, wait a minute, that's the same one.
No, that's the same one, this one is $9,000 something.
Good try.
Sorry about that. Here, oh, this is the copying machine. Here you go, Karen.
If she had a better copying machine, she would have been able to have it.
Yeah, so, the printer, the printer, Gary actually sent me the specs on the printer that he looked at. It's a couple hundred, $300, approximately $300 less than the printer that I had actually was suggested to me by Automated Business Service. And the pixels are like one, the one that I have, that automated gave me, the DPI, which is about the pixels. So it's the quality and the resolution of the print. It's 400. The one that Gary gave me, the $300 less, is 600. So the resolution is not quite as good. So for $300, I think it would be two bucks to get the better one. And I did actually get the price off of the internet for the exact same printer, off of the Amazon.com, and it was $1,744. So $997, doesn't look too bad. And I did have another printer that they had given me.
I don't need it.
Okay.
I don't need a bunch more paper.
All right, I don't need any more paper, that's all right. I'm just, I just feel that the citizens of the community and the library staff deserve a printer that doesn't give copies with big streaks down them. I don't know if that's too much to ask. Anyway, anybody have any questions about those things for me?
Anybody in the board?
All right, yes.
Just a really quick thing, so, in the Smithsonian is a great opportunity for the region and the community. Since the Regional Planning Commission is here, I'd just like to thank the Regional Planning Commission for making us aware of this opportunity almost a year ago.
Yes.
And then from there, you know, more fortunately, if we have staff who could, you know, assist. So thanks for the help again.
That's what I'm from, okay. Janet, you're the one that brought that to our...
Somebody.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I received an invitation today, and we, someone will be here, multiple people, so thank you.
That's the one date we have engraved, December 19th, that's when the dignitaries from town and obviously Janet will be here for our big opening.
Four to six. Is it four to six?
Four to six, that's right.
Great.
Thank you. Joe?
Do you mind if I just answer the initial question? That's all listed in the Clean Water Need Survey.
Okay.
It goes to Department of Environmental Protection. We've already compiled the draft based on our capital needs, and I sent your copy of, I sent a copy of that email to Tamika, Gary, and the Chair, so you've got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right?
Thank you. All right.
Carrie, thank you, if I may, to you and your staff and the library trustees and everybody kind of taking, you know, taking on the Smithsonian stuff because it's a, a big chunk. And I know the coordination with the 300th also has been a huge help. And, you know, DPW is going to be involved, so thank you for all the, Joe and everybody, 300th, Joe, you, everybody, for all the work that's going to bring it awesomeness.
Hi, Mr. Williams, over. Carrie, are you still working on that job with the Select Board? Maybe trying to get together with all of the different committees?
So, so yes, actually, I'm just saying that you should say that. With the Smithsonian, if we have a successful program and we, we want to continue more programming, there is a very strong possibility of an additional $10,000 in grant money. And I actually am looking at that very seriously because I think that is what we could use it for, to educate the community on the civics and what goes on. Because there's a lot of misinformation and a lot of people who really don't know a lot of stuff as it relates to civic and government activities and how things work. And we really, we really need to do something about that. My board has been talking about it for about four years now, and we really, really need to do something.
So by participating in this year's Smithsonian, we'll be able to apply to, for another grant next year?
My...
Yeah, great.
That would be helpful because I know both Carol and Leah have been very much interested, and we've been trying, really had to figure out how to do this, how to just nail it down.
Right, and I think having like a dedicated funding source to actually do it well and comprehensively is important and would be better received and a better value, like better time value for everyone participating also. So thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you for the question. All right. Move on to the town administrator... Move on to the Town Administrator Update.
Okay, just a couple of comments before. I just have a couple of things anyway, but we have, just to reiterate Carrie's comments, we have met with Carrie as well as the Three Hundred Commission. I thought they were very productive and valuable meetings. Everything's good, a lot of enthusiasm there, so we certainly wanna make this a big success. Um, the second thing, I thought, um, as Janet was, was getting into, Janet Pierce, were you about to offer us a message board? Or did I misunderstand?
Um, there are regional message boards, as you may recall, through the Homeland Security Equipment Program. Um, all equipment is available on a regional basis. So if you did need more, if you needed help reaching out to some other communities, please let us know. Our Homeland Security meeting is on. Could you, I could do it.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I didn't wanna misunderstand.
No. I don't have any.
And just to mention, um, I know Janet has a presentation, but to mention CMRPC, Dominique DeTremble did reach out to us in regards to a Community Compact Efficiency Grant Program, which I've been working, actually David and I have been talking about this. So, and, and we did let them know that we do have interest in the Economic Development Coordinator Grant Manager. And that will also be a shared, um, a shared manager program. And then I thank you, I have, been back and forth with Dominique, so I thank you for that. And we, we do have a lot of interest in that. And that's, can you refresh me on the expiration date or David, was it the tenth?
Yeah, the Community Compact Grant. This should be a Community Compact Regionalization Grant, which is open until November tenth and closes at noon.
Okay, okay. David's been very helpful, isn't, obviously so has CMRPC and Dominique. So, thank you very much and we'll be in touch. Um, and the only other short thing I have is that I want everybody to know that the numbers for free cash have been submitted. Um, and I do have them with me if you would like me to share them, but they have been submitted, so we just have to wait for DOR's review, which we're trying to expedite that process to make sure that these numbers are in fact actual. So, which I believe them to be. So, you okay with me sharing the numbers?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, so for Water and Sewer Enterprise, the amount was submitted was six hundred and thirty-six thousand. These are rounded numbers. The article requisitions out of that was a hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars, which would leave a balance of five hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars. The amount submitted for free cash was eight hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Article request, including the three five percentages for OPEP and, and the capital stabilization and also stabilization, was two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, which will leave a kitty of approximately five hundred and fifty-five thousand. I know at last meeting, we were very conservative with, with reviewing the figure of five hundred thousand, and we knew we would get a little bit more than that. So very happy with these numbers. And that's what we're going with at this, at this point. So, and that's all I have unless there's other questions.
If, if I may, I just want more for the public to be mindful of that free cash number to carry forward is then, assuming everything certifies and we have that five fifty to carry forward for this, um, annual in the spring, we have to be mindful that oftentimes we end up having to pay snow and ice, or I think this past year, we paid a whole lot out of ARBA and free cash. So, um, we need to try to keep that as bolstered as possible.
Understood.
I think, I mean-
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Great point. All right. Um, old business, so last time we met, we talked about the Dispatch Center Intermunicipal Agreement. This agreement is with the town of Berry, Oakham, Warren, and Hubbardston. We only had one signature page. It was just a clerical error somewhere along the line. So we have agreed to it, but we just need to sign these. Is there anything, do we need to agree to sign this, or are we?
It was worth making a motion to sign them.
So if we can have a motion.
So move. Second.
And roll call?
Glock, aye.
Nichols, aye.
Wait a minute.
And Benoit, aye. So we'll put these aside to sign. Thank you. And now for our presentation. Janet, take it away.
Do I want to stand up?
Whatever's, whatever makes you comfortable.
Well, I don't, you know, I know some people behind me, so I-
If, and there's a mic if you wanted to-
Or they're not heckling or-
Faces, they're real.
Right.
Well, in fact, I all of a sudden laughed, so now I'm not nervous anymore. So, I'm Janet Pierce. For those of you who have not met me, I think there's maybe two people. I don't know. Um, I'm Janet Pierce, I'm the Executive Director with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. Uh, the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission serves the city of Worcester and Thirty-Nine surrounding communities. Uh, I do have to say, I've been Executive Director for a little bit over seven years. Uh, I started a regional services program about ten years ago. Uh, Gary was my first customer way back when, at Regional Services. Had a really great working relationship with Gary. He brought me into the town, uh, being Executive Director, really had a great relationship. And I like to think of it as a partnership with the town of Rottlin. So it's really my pleasure to be here before you.
Thank you.
Um, one quick shout out that's really important is to Dick Williams. Uh, he serves on our Executive Committee. He's a delegate to the Commission. He's served in that capacity for many years. Uh, he works with the Transportation Planning Committee, has been on and off the Executive Committee, but he served as a delegate. He's an advocate for your community. Uh, he shares with us some of your, a lot of your strengths, some of your weaknesses. Uh, we share opportunities and he expresses some threats at some point. Uh, I really thank him for putting together this meeting today. Uh, transportation's near and dear to Dick. Uh, with the growth in the community, uh, so many more cars on the roads and, um, from all the communities and whatnot, the changes over the last twenty, forty years. Near and dear to Dick's heart, he wanted to make sure that your voices in this community were heard as part of the infrastructure. We've heard about, you know, the water, the sewer, uh, all other infrastructure needs, working on your master plan and whatnot, but the transportation. Rich will talk a little bit about that. I need to take away from their presentation. But I would encourage anybody that is not here, that's not able to participate, if there are comments, we value those comments and please share them with us. I believe on the slide, on the presentation, uh, there'll be contact information. If not, Tamika, if you don't mind, uh, it could go through you or Gary and you could pass them along to us.
Of course.
But greatly appreciate what anyone, it, it's your plans, we put it together, similar to the master plan. So the more voices that we hear, uh, the more ideas and we can put all of this to it to identify your needs for the future. Gonna turn it over real quick. This is Rich Ryden, Project Manager for the Transportation Department. And then online, hi, Gabe. Uh, Gabe Trevor, who I'm sure many of you are familiar with.
Can, can you hear me over there?
Sure can. Uh, he's an Assistant Planner with the Regional Collaboration and Community Planning Department. And huge shout out to Dave, Dave George as well. Thank you for involving us in so, so many different plans that you have going on in the communities. And thank both of you for your volunteerism above and beyond, uh, in some of our other subgroups. So the more engaged we are with you, the more we understand your needs and can reach out to you when opportunities present themselves.
Thank you.
So Rich, Gabe, who am I turning it over to? I'm gonna sit down.
I'm gonna go. I'll be going first. Hi, everyone. Uh, my name's Gabe Trevor. I'm an Associate Planner at CMRPC. I'm sorry I couldn't join you in person, but I had, um, another meeting. So can everyone, can everyone there see the, uh, see, see my screen share?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, um, as Janet, uh, you know, as I'm sure many of you are aware, um, CMRPC is a regional planning agency that serves the southern part of Worcester County, um, so Worcester and Thirty-Nine surrounding communities. In the earlier part of October, um, we had a Northern Subregion Summit on Infrastructure. So that included Berry, Holden, Oakham, Paxton, Princeton, Rutland, and West Boylston. And so we're here tonight, um, to get some more feedback from Rutland, uh, on, you know, some of the infrastructure issues facing the region. And so, um, you know, this, this is part of a couple of different projects. Um, you know, currently CMRPC is undertaking the Imagine 2050 Project, um, which, as Janet mentioned, is pretty similar to the master plans that we do for communities, but kind of focused on the whole region. And so tonight, we're gonna be talking about the infrastructure and transportation components of that. And this is also part of the EEA Infrastructure Plan. And so that's sort of the primary component of this, but it's gonna be incorporated into Imagine 2050. And, uh, you know, part of the purpose of gathering this data is that, uh, right now there's a lot of federal money coming down. And so, uh, this would be a great opportunity for Rutland to align any potential projects they have with that federal money. Um, and like Janet mentioned, uh, at least on the infrastructure side, if you feel like, uh, there's a comment you wanted to get in, because, you know, we only have so much time tonight, um, you can email my colleague, Carrie Sawa, at kaysawa@cmrpc.org, or you could, you know, reach out to Janet or myself, or I'm sure Rich. And we'd be happy to take your comments. So, um, we're gonna go over a few different topics. Um, and basically, I just wanna solicit some feedback on these topics from the Select Board and, uh, you know, if there's any members of the public who wanna chime in as well. But basically, at the summit, uh, we identified various areas of concern for, uh, for several topics, including water, sewer, stormwater, natural gas, electricity, energy, and broadband. And so, uh, you know, for public water, some of the areas of concern that were identified were well protections, aging treatment and facilities, buildings, below-grade infrastructure, PFAS contamination, uh, which is, you know, a type of chemical runoff that's pretty common, unfortunately, uh, groundwater contamination, suppliers and clean sources, water access as the population grows, impact on firefighting infrastructure, water reuse and gray water, and, uh, I guess public outreach on water issues, because I, I'm sure many, uh, members of the public aren't totally familiar with their town's water infrastructure. Um, so are there any, anything else that you think should be included, um, as, you know, the region discusses water? If there's anything from Rutland that you think, um, any concerns from Rutland that you think is missing from this list? Okay? I can move on if that's okay? And so then again, um, looking at public sewer, um, there are several areas of concern that were identified, cost of operation, private pump station operations, failing septic tanks, aging infrastructure, equipment replacements, um, and the limited capacity for growth. Then again, are there any issues specific to Rutland that you think should, you know, we should be aware of to look out for funding, or that should be identified in maybe more general terms from, uh, on this list for us to work on?
Or anything that you would wanna emphasize?
Yeah. Yeah, not just that if it's missing, but if you think something, like, if, if one of the, you know, we could talk about water and just general water as well, but if there's any issues you think are especially pressing for the community, um, we wanna know.
Do you mind if I go ahead?
Yeah, cool.
Um, I'll be candid. The relationship between Holden, Rutland, and Worcester is thorny at best. There's an intermunicipal agreement to move wastewater from Rutland through Holden, through Worcester to the Upper Blackstone or Pollution Abatement District. Holden had so much trouble with it, it's gone to court. It goes back to court tomorrow. And the, the real takeaway on this, it, from a planning, from a planning standpoint, as an engineer, those capacities are finite. So we are, you know, Rutland's ability to send more wastewater in the long term is directly linked to the size of the pipe. So, um, those pipelines that go through Holden and into Rutland were installed by DCR or MDC at one point. And I don't see them stepping up to, to, to consider capacity of the region, nor do I see anybody trying to come up with a better agreement between those communities that are mentioned. So I guess I'd look there. I hope that helps.
No, that, that's really good insight. Cause you know, obviously, you know, we, you know, we're aware of that, that lawsuit that's occurring, but I don't, you know, those sort of inter, intermunicipal relationships, I think, are something that CMRPC would like to, like to see, uh, go better. And, you know, it's, it's a sensitive topic, but I think it's important to, to have that on the table.
But they, I just, the, the growth, or the access to growth for the community is directly linked to the size of the pipe at the town line. And if no one's looking, you know, long term for increasing what goes through Holden or, or increasing Worcester's capacity to take more flow, um, that number's finite.
No, absolutely. That's a really good point.
Which I think is very important to identify because with any plan, as you know, you know, look at your municipal vulnerability plan, same with the, um, with your master plan, it's an opportunity for funding in the future, especially identifying that need. And if it's related to housing, you know, the necessity of housing with a shortage, and also, uh, the potential for economic development growth. And you're looking at EDA grants or municipal MVP grants. Now, there are, there are quite a few opportunities out there that may exist.
I have to agree with that. There's, uh, yes, the capacity, you know, up to Holden's town line, the age of the pipe, what would be really significant is that the dirt, how, how much longer is that pipe gonna be good? Because Pine Hill Reservoir is sitting fairly close downstream. And that, to me, would be something to keep in mind, I would think. And also, how about maybe a future type of, uh, nothing digester type of thing for processing, rather than stripping it all the way down to, down to Dance of Day or something like that, you know, where it ends up anyway. I, I feel there's a lot of future here that needs to be looked at. And it's going to become fast, unfortunately.
If I may, just to go back to water briefly, I think you touched on it a little bit, Gabe, but Rutland really suffered. We have one public water supply and that's it. And so the funding to find additional, um, opportunities or whatever is a huge, um, concern, I think. Just in general, finding it, whether it's funding, whether it's actual location, again, linked to the growth, similar to what Joe mentioned, the capacity side on the sewer, but also, um, public water supply. And even the people who are on private wells, then how is Aquaphor feeding it? And if it's tapped in as a public water supply that are the people on private that aren't able to tap into public, being hit, having their wells drawn down because it's suddenly being taken for the public or whatever. There's, I think, a whole lot going on there that needs to be looked at comprehensively.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think, you know, cause obviously working on the master plan and other things, uh, but the water question comes up a lot and I think it's something that's a little bit, it can be, it's really scary when thinking about what the, what the future holds. Can be anxiety inducing. Um, I'm gonna, just to keep us moving along, um, I'm going to move on to a couple slides forward. So some, you know, kind of in a similar vein, but, um, in terms of stormwater management, um, there were several areas of concern identified in the summit, including MS4 upgrades, uh, creating new management plans and regulations, um, introducing low-impact design and green stormwater management, which would, uh, you know, basically, in, you know, new subdivisions, make sure that you're doing stormwater management right and you don't run into issues in the future. Um, culvert repairs, salt contamination from the mass pipe, which I don't think is as much of a concern in Rutland, but, you know, honestly, as traffic increases, uh, you know, that, that could be, that could be a concern around here, uh, off the, off some of the bigger roads. Um, stormwater bylaw development, um, basically the lack of subsurface systems in rural towns, and the lengthy repair process required for, uh, stormwater management. So, yeah, I mean, if any of these issues stand out to you as particularly important in Rutland, um, we would like to know.
Can I go ahead? We're supposed to do all of it because we're permitted and we're not doing any of it. So, um, we're trying to come up with a way to fund it, pretty much everything you mentioned. There is one- There is one bylaw created to comply with EPA's requirements, but the bulk of the stuff isn't getting done. So we're working internally, trying to come up with possibly a stormwater utility to fund a lot of that work, because we can't right now. The other concern I want to mention is DCR out at Wachusett Basin. They've identified sodium getting into their groundwater and have come up with a couple of grants. And we actually started using brine to try and mitigate some of that contamination from road salt. So it is, it is an issue here, it's because they want to protect the Wachusett reservoir.
I believe the only community in our region shoes growing has a stormwater utility. They've already been, and we can do contact with the commission if you're interested.
Thank you. We drafted one, it's just we have to make a commitment.
Cool, thank you.
One thing about culvert repairs, you had mentioned about Wachusett Street?
Yep.
And where Muscat Park crosses underneath.
It's going to be done next week.
I was going to say, all three of those culverts that cross underneath are all voted out. So I think that's something that really has to go on in this town to find out how.
The only other thing I want to add to that before I forget, just, and I want to keep moving. A lot of the development has brought about significant amounts of stormwater infrastructure in the ground. We have a lot. We have a lot of basins, storm drains, treatment devices, there's a lot of that here, more than you would expect.
No, that's good to know. All right, I'm going to move on. Energy, you know, obviously, a few, some fewer areas of concern, but, you know, something that has come up in the master plan process is transitioning from gas-powered vehicles and equipment. I know in the master plan, you know, we've been discussing implementing electric vehicles and charging stations as a goal for the town. Solar energy, obviously, you know, I know there's been several solar installations. I don't think there's been any relevant to my, nothing, none of the large solar installations to my knowledge, but I know in some of our other towns, we've had some solar installations that, you know, can, can be controversial, but, and then also investigating geothermal energy. I don't know how viable that is in our region, but obviously, it would be something to, if that was viable, that would be, that would be something we should look into. So is there any other energy issues for Rutland that maybe aren't on this, on this pretty short list? Or, you know, seem relevant?
Gabe, if I may, one of the big things that I think we ran into a couple of years ago was the grid not being able to take capacity. So there's a lot of interest, there was a few, a couple, at least a couple of solar projects from the town that were set to go through but couldn't because grid wouldn't accept the, wouldn't accept the capacity. So it's not, I think, there's a lot of individual solar in town, and I'm starting to see some individual geothermal going on also. But for the town to be, come involved in it, it's tough, because the amount that the town would be generating is not being accepted into the grid. And because Rutland's, I think, one of the only, I think, we're the only surrounding community, at least from the five Wachusett towns, that don't have municipal energy. We, I don't know if that impacts it or not, but just so, we do not have municipal energy, so.
No, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a good issue to bring up, because, you know, that's like, that's a real structural barrier to implementing this anywhere. I did not know that about Rutland.
Right, we had somebody actually back out from, not, I don't know how far it had gone into the talks about it, but it was going to cost them over a million dollars to build something to, before it got to the grid, and so they backed out.
Oh, wow.
Being, being on the solar committee, we had ten solar fields that the people backed out of. Because of the national grid not building substations, we have only two substations in this community, and one feed line from Westminster coming in and going back out that we tap on once in a while for emergency use. But, yeah, yeah, the biggest thing was substations upgraded and/or new ones built. But ten, we had ten fields that people, you know, wanted to push and had to back down.
That's awful to hear.
Is, can I, is Treasure Valley in Rutland?
Yes, so that's a big field.
Right, that's, that's what I was trying to say to you.
No, we have a lot.
Yeah, we have, and I thought Rutland was one of the few communities in, as it's true, with so many solar fields already, more than some other towns, so.
I think a lot of them are privately owned or on private land. And so I know, I know for sure there are a couple that were going to be, going on town, the RDIC one and then the ancillary one on Wheeler, that didn't go because of the, the grid capacity issue. So it's definitely a, an issue.
If I could just jump in on this, as things change with solar, we hear about the, about the difficulties of storing electricity, storing energy. So you're seeing a push for battery storage facilities out of the primary use. So even if you could generate it, can you store it so that it can be used and allocated during those peak times?
No, I'll, I'll add that to the list as well, because I know, I was in some community and there was, I was, I was, I remember I was sitting in on a planning board meeting, and there was controversy about the noise, not that the, not that the actual panels would generate, but that the storage would generate. I mean, that's, that's a key part in making sure that the grid can adapt to it. Okay, I'm just going to move on, just to keep, then, because we also have a whole transportation section I want to get to with Rich. So yeah, gas lines, you know, on the energy, sort of in the same realm as energy. Several areas of concern, a lack of natural gas providers, size of existing gas lines, a potential hindrance to future development. Obviously, as you can see from the map, in the north region at least, Eversource is only serving two of these communities. Slow process to develop new gas lines, communication issues with the gas companies, and, you know, relatedly, gas leaks. So, I mean, this seems kind of self-explanatory for Rutland, but if there's any insight into, you know, if there's been any attempts to make progress on this, or if there've been issues with Eversource, that would be interesting to hear about.
I don't know where you, the gas line stops at Holden Craft Rock. I do believe it was a six-inch line.
Six-inch line, yeah.
So if Rutland wants it, it's a long haul to bring it.
I was, I think, I thought there had been some early conversation about trying to bring it up, at least Main Street, and it was not, not well-received from an investment point on the Eversource side. But I don't know if that was when Eversource was in, or if it was before Eversource. I don't know the timeline for it.
All right, I'm going to move on unless there's any more comments on this, but I'm making, I'm taking notes on all of this.
Gabe, can you just add in, I'll email about it, but the economic development piece to gas lines, especially a lot of businesses, it's more economical or easier for them to have
Yeah, abso-
gas, and so the fact that Rutland doesn't have it is
Absolutely.
potentially a barrier.
Okay, relatedly, looking at electric, several areas of concern, that electricity lines are not resilient, that there's limited backup power, that rural areas are experiencing long outages, and that we are under capacity for development. So I think very similar problems to what we're seeing with the natural gas conversation. Can everyone hear me over there?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, good, good, I just, Leah cut out for a bit, so I wanted to make sure I wasn't talking over anyone.
I believe the closest gas-powered facilities in South Bridge, is it?
Oh, the gate station?
Yeah.
We got, no, Worcester Plan's a huge gate station.
Worcester has it.
Worcester's got a gate station downtown by the new facility, the new baseball park.
Yeah.
Just recently renovated.
Also, I think the infrastructure in town here needs to be upgraded too. Those wires are, you know.
The triplex that is from the 70s.
Yeah, something like that. And also, we need to get some trees down and away from them. That's going to be a big thing if we have another place.
On the flip side, Dick, we got a bunch of new poles in town.
They came in about, they'd been auctioned back to us about a year ago. I would want to say if they took down thirty trees, they took down a hundred. They do come in every so often and try and clean that up. So they do some diligence, I wouldn't call them remiss by any means.
I've heard that they're increasing their efforts, some of the communities are seeing that. Bringing in more tree crews.
The pending work on Palmigusset will have on wire.
All right, I'm going to move on unless there's any more comments on this. And then I think this is the final part of my section, but we're also, obviously, broadband, you know, with the pandemic and with just, you know, more remote work and, you know, the internet economy. Broadband is kind of emerging as a public utility, similar to electricity and natural gas, where it's this, you know, barrier to development if you don't have it. So the areas of concern identified were that phone and cell towers don't have backup generators. Obviously, a desire to expand internet capacity and wireless coverage. Concerns about monopoly on coverage. Concerns about the cost, you know, I know I pay, I think, like eighty dollars a month at least for, for my internet in Worcester, which is, you know, not, not cheap. Municipal capacity to develop broadband. And then also, you know, relatedly, issues with cybersecurity impacting municipal infrastructure, you know, as everything is connected to the internet. You know, if there's, if there's any sort of cybersecurity issue, that can, you know, put a lot more in jeopardy than just, you know, the town email. It could affect, you know, utilities and, and, you know, that sort of thing. So any things specific to this issue for Rutland?
Yes, do you guys provide any type of training for municipal departments, employees, as to cybersecurity?
Maya, Maya will, do you have Maya insurance? Maya provides that, and there's a big push for cybersecurity training through the state as well, and also through homeland security, constant training.
I'm a private organization, and we do it on a diligent, regular basis.
I would reach out to your IT provider too. I know ours will send out random spam-type emails to staff, and if they open a link, then they immediately go to a training site. But this is done through the IT provider, so, you know, they want to reach out.
All right, I think, yes, I'm just going to go through these pretty quickly, but obviously, the select board got this presentation, but, you know, part of why we're doing this is obviously to identify this for our own purposes, but also, you know, there's various different funding opportunities for all the things that we discussed. I'm not going to go through this in detail, just because, you know, we want to move on to transportation, but, you know, if anyone on the select board or in the public is interested in learning more about these funding opportunities, you obviously can reach out to CMRPC for more information. All right, I'm going to let Rich take it.
Thank you, Gabe, and good evening, everyone. Rich Rydant, Transportation Project Manager at the CMRPC. I've been the operator and working chap for many years, as well as Mr. Williams here, Gary, of course. So it's great to be here, and thank you for having us. We're putting together a long-range transportation plan. It's all online and such, but they, they make me a copy, so you can see it's a big, big document here, and it addresses all major modes of transportation in our planning region. And there's numerous linkages that are in here as well in regards to what we do. And basically here, if you can see the slides, I guess I'm going to look at the screen here and talk about them. And again, much like Gabe, looking for your feedback, and then similarly, through the town staff afterwards, if you have a chance to digest this and get back to us. Certainly, you're representative to the CMRPCs here as well. Glad that Joe similarly gave a great rundown of what the town is doing in transportation partly, and taking the advantage of what's available here through the CMRPC, and specifically, the Central Mass Metropolitan Planning Organization, the policy group that decides where the, these monies can be allocated, made up of select board members from all of our planning subregions, so. But the purpose of this LRTP, Long Range Transportation Plan, we're looking out, say, over twenty-five years into the future. And we're looking at a multimodal transportation network and trying to identify these priorities, as is shown here, we do it every four years. So again, looking to the future. Next slide, please. And how is it put together? And it's true events like this, and certainly, there's, many things are taken into consideration on our planning expertise, management systems, I do think three being pavement congestion. Let's see, pavement congestion, I know the other one too, safety, roadway safety. Performance measures, that's something that transcends all of our work, trying to get the best return for the investment of our transportation dollar. Certainly, the participants, such as this group, but we've had targeted summits, as Gabe had mentioned earlier, to town officials that work every day in these particular areas. Also, various stakeholder groups, organizations. I deal with freight, and so I've sat down with some of the freight providers, rail and trucking in our region as an example. But basically, you know, trying to, again, as my colleagues have mentioned, you know, determining needs on the local level, and then us trying to match them with monies that are available on the federal level. There is the bipartisan infrastructure law that was passed about a year ago now, and it pumped up some of the monies for the Transportation Improvement Program, or the TIP, which Rutland is taking advantage of on Palmigusset Road. And it also brought dollars to other areas, for instance, beyond the traditional, say, roads, bridges, transit. It's also bringing, as an example, a program for electric vehicle charging stations. I think town staff is going to get a survey on that pretty soon, so we're moving on that. But next slide, please. And again, there's the process here that I've already touched upon, some of these things, public outreach, performance management, trying to get the best return for the investment. Certainly, equity considerations are very important on the federal level. It transcends all our work, and so we keep an eye on the population and employment numbers, housing, et cetera, from right now in the most recent census, but projecting out to the future. And we'll have a couple of scenarios that we'll use when we do analysis here. And so, let's see, I mentioned some of the federal, state, community programs, master plans, trying to, as some of the work that Gabe has mentioned here, we'll certainly be interacting with the staff, and this material dovetails together in many ways. Let's see, next slide, please. Oh, so I touched upon some of these projections, we'll be looking out to the future here to see where we might be going. Population is expected to increase, certainly, employment is. Some of the numbers that the CMRPC staff has come up with differ from some of the perhaps lower projections that the state is providing us through UMass and Dunhill Institute, if I'm not mistaken. But basically, again, we'll be looking at scenarios that we feel comfortable with, and also that the state would like us to carry out, moving ahead. and also that the state would like us to carry out moving ahead. So again, past efforts here in the north subregion, certainly of which Rutland is one of the host communities. Different things that have been done associated, I'll start on walkability there. We have a pedestrian plan for the region. Certainly there's been a lot of work on the Mass Central Rail Trail in Waukesha Greenways over, geez, the last couple decades at least. Neighborhood safe assessment, we did next door in Holden. I'll continue just down the list there. CMRPC dashboards that are available on our website. Lot of, as Gary, excuse me, as Joe had mentioned earlier with the culverts. It's great to hear the town is working on that. Just probably a tip of the iceberg, there's about five thousand culverts in our planning region. Many undersized, deteriorating and such, haven't been looked at since they were installed in some cases. Sometimes they get buried. And so we wind up locating these, inspecting them using a standardized methodology. And it allows the towns to see what, you know, you might have twenty structures, but maybe two of them are really critical. So it allows you to target available funding and such. Certainly some of the things we've done in the past and traditionally with pavement, management, sidewalk condition that's expanded to that. Certainly transit, we are the planners for the Worcester Regional Transit Authority and we work with the Councils of Aging. Similarly, like what may serve some of the senior population in Rutland here. Certainly there's a regional bicycle plan as well to go with the pedestrian plan. Bicycle compatibility index, that basically if you look at a road and it will give you a feedback on how easy it might be for an individual to bike it with certain skills. And so if you have real steep hills, it doesn't score well, for instance. So we've done that throughout the region. And all this is available through staff or on the website and certainly contact any of us. The TIP, as I had mentioned, Transportation Improvement Program. Federal program that brings dollars into the region here. Approximately twenty-five million dollars a year now to deal with projects such as reconstruction of the section of Palmagussett Road. You might have seen in the landmark of Holden recently approved the right-of-way work that needs to be done for Shrewsbury Street reconstruction. New Roundabout in front of Mount View School is another example here. Let's see, Paxton, Route thirty-one, Holden Road was redone there. It had terrible drainage for many, many years. Bus route to Waukesha and such. And so that's the type of projects that are touched upon by that. Bridges, we're trying to get more culverts and such involved because culverts, geez, it's a pipe, you know, some of these are seven hundred thousand dollar pipes, for instance, that can absorb a lot of money quickly. Well, let's see, complete streets, I'm unaware personally if Rutland has gotten into that program, but getting the nod, thank you. And so that could lead to improved sidewalks, connectivity for bike and peds, the schools and municipal buildings here in the town center. If there's a plan there to move forward with some of those projects. Next slide, please, Gabe. So as I mentioned, we look at all the major modes that are listed there. And again, what's happening now, what we know, using our skills to look into the future somewhat. Getting that feedback from our stakeholders such as the board here and trying to form that vision for the future and again, needs and priorities. Next slide, please. So major planning areas, I mentioned safety congestion before. Pavement certainly as well. But also asset, which includes pavement, bridge, culvert, things of that nature. The environment, certainly very important. We have a number of, we hold an environmental consultation every year and this document holds a series of maps that are put together looking at mass DEP, mass DCR, National Heritage Endangered Species. Let's see, flood zones and such. So all these things are taken into account on a, you know, major scope, on a systematic basis when we're looking at these things. So and emerging technologies such as, you know, again, I guess it's emerging and proliferating EV charging stations as an example. Intelligent transportation systems and such. Just like flashing pedestrian beacons that are being used here and there now. And more widely. Let's see. Next slide, please. So as I had mentioned before, safety, big focus here. And we had done the summits here and looking for a little more information from the board. Any feedback you'd like to add here, much like Gabe did. But certainly we look at pedestrian bicycle safety, crash data provided by Mastod. We conduct road safety audits and that's where, say, Mastod, our staff, engineering team go out to a particular location and assess it and look at what the difficulties are, the challenges, and try to come up with a host of improvement options that could be eventually implemented. Highway Improvement Safety Program or H SIP, those are the top two hundred crash sites in the, in the state that get looked at. That list, locations continue to be addressed, others continue to rise on there. And so again, like anything, we work closely with the host communities. I see in Holden, certainly Highland Street was brought up, pedestrian crash cluster. Main Street, Malvin and Holden, that particular intersection. Here in Rutland, Main Street at Maple have Route fifty-six there being looked at, certainly. And I think one twenty-two A and Pleasantale Road has come up recently and I think the state's giving some attention to that. But again, through, if you have any feedback now you'd like to provide on a safety, locations that are, have safety issues in town.
The simple biggest one, if you don't mind if I go ahead, please. It's the state. We have problems on one twenty-two A at both fifty-six North and fifty-six, you know, Maple and Palmagussett. We have trouble with Pleasantale on one twenty-two. Neither of those are our roads. They're massive right-of-ways. We've written to the state a couple of times, especially both myself and the Chief of Police wrote to the state regarding fifty-six and Main at both its intersections. And they haven't been necessarily negative, but they're also not doing it.
They, we, they actually came out and did a safety audit a few years ago. We walked from where fifty-six comes out, Palmagussett and then Maple Street. We spent some time and I believe that's when the flashing beaking, beacon came up to help with some of those safety issues. The sun was certainly noted at that time too, but they did, they did spend several hours out here.
Yes, with Margaret was here, I think at that time too.
Rich, one thing I, I didn't see anything in there about gravel roads. This is Rutland. There's nothing there about, it was hot top paving and all that, but nothing about gravel.
I have pictures of the gravel roads for your master plan, just saying.
I think it should be, it should come up because there are quite a few gravel roads in Rutland.
Ten miles of public gravel roads.
There you go.
I was surprised.
Most, and, and a lot of them are used every day by school buses, so. They're critical.
And there's not that many gravel banks around. DCI owns them and they don't allow us.
And those are all public roads?
Yes.
Well, we have more private ones too, if you don't think that's enough.
Again, if you digest this, you have something else.
Can I just ask you a question? You had mentioned the corridor studies. Have you done any, and Rich has been with the agency. He has such a history, it's wonderful. Have you done a corridor study in Rutland? Have you ever done fifty-six? Or you did Princeton, thirty-one, pretty much the whole segment of CMRPC.
We, years ago, through the Rutland Planning Board had looked at Maple and one twenty-two A and suggested some improvements there. And again, nothing's easy and if it was easy, it probably, probably would have been done by now. But to address the grade through their sidewalks and such and be sensitive to the businesses that are right there, so. And the pedestrian crossway.
If I, this is maybe an elephant in the room, especially with Dick here. Has there been any additional conversation about looking at growth, not only just within Rutland, but a little bit farther west and conversations around highway access or anything? Because that's one of the, you know, I know we hear from Dick years ago, there was conversation with Holden to get a bypass access. But just looking at the growth here in Rutland and then knowing that, you know, surrounding Rutland is also going to have growth. And, you know, Holden continues to have growth also. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll be looking at population, employment into the future. And basically, for instance, new, new roadways, you know, few and far between is the golden age of highway construction is perhaps behind us. But it's these critical links and such. And you're absolutely correct, you know, growth in Rutland and Barry, Hupperton, you know, a lot of it has to go through Holden and such. Maybe in the day, if we went back in our time machine forty, fifty years ago before the density of housing and such and certainly the environmental, environmentally sensitive lands and such. So it's, it's hard to snake in anything new. But it did come up at the meeting we had in West Boylston, perhaps, you know, take advantage of what's there, you know, access to one ninety. Could that be improved? Could access to commuter rail either in the Fitchburg Line or the Worcester Line be improved from these communities? Mr. Williams and I speak often that it was examined many years ago to use the rail line. Could you have a passenger service to bring you down a union station to feed the commuter rail? That might have had more momentum in the past than it might gain at this stage. But there's also the place for transit as well, so. But it's what, you know, we're trying to feel, you know, find out what your needs are similarly and I appreciate that comment there.
There's also, if I may, some conversation just with the recent growth in Worcester and the Canal District and everything and Rutland's not that far away from that and how to capitalize on that, whether that's public transportation access, whether that's to bring people from the city to Rutland for outdoor recreation and/or businesses and/or whatever and to make that partnership a little bit easier. It's the economic growth in Worcester, but also the residential growth also.
Shuttle, again, not my expertise through osmosis with the transit staff in the office. There has been shuttle service, Community Connections on Westboro that's gained quite a bit of ridership. And there's a lot of excitement around that. Quay Bog Connections as well out in the Brookfields. So there may be those opportunities as well.
Those are considered microtransit projects and are, is funding available for that? And even feasibility studies? We have some models as well. To go back to the, I think it's Route fifty-two, is that what, I said the wrong route before. Is it fifty-two? Or a bye, a bypass?
Forty-nine nine.
Bypass.
Well, forty-nine, right, and then there was fifty-two or something. I always thought it was forty-nine. But what, what we've talked about in the past and when Margaret was here, we talked about it and nothing really materialized, but we have district local technical assistance funding. And I would recommend tapping into that funding. The cycle is, is by calendar and we will be soliciting requests for that funding. The staff provides technical assistance on different types of projects and especially if it's a regional, you score higher points on that. But the notices will be going out on that sometime probably early December. And it's funded through the legislature every year. It's part of the budget.
I think, Dave, you've worked a little bit on some DLT projects also, right? The Ag Byway and everything, I think, maybe?
Yeah, we've had several of them now at this point. I've seen it roads, the Ag projects, yeah.
Dave's a frequent flyer. He knows the process.
One of the things of Route forty-nine and most of the people here probably think about cars, but it's trailer trucks that are hauling supplies. And I had an opportunity to hear a lot of people discuss about trailer trucks in some of the back roads that through Rutland, Glenwood and other places that trailer trucks shouldn't probably be, but, you know, GPS and sending them that way and that's the way they go. Forty-nine would be an ideal spot in order to get them up to New Hampshire and also for anybody else to make it either to Route nine or to Route two or beyond. But I do feel that some new highways is not a bad idea, but boy, we gotta start thinking about how transit or some other future way of getting people in and out of here.
Well, I think the internet coverage is gonna be a little different too. I, I think the access to the internet's gonna be critical because you have that many more people working out of homes.
And I know there's the high-speed rail stuff for Western Mass, but one of the barriers to commuter rail is the amount of time, the reliability and the amount of time that it takes and the unpredictability of it. And so that's, I understand, not a CMRPC issue. That's a statewide issue, but that's, I think, one of the barriers in addition to the fact that we're kind of still commuting distance away and parking distance and everything. There's other barriers, but, yeah.
One of the things Rich brought up a long time ago, I say a long time, maybe a couple of years ago, that transit should have been looped and come out to where Route forty-nine was gonna go from Fitchburg down to Spencer and back down and go through Boston and just keep running in circles. And if they had forty-nine, we could have gone to there, which is just down the bottom of the hill over here at Long Pond is where it was gonna be, you know, to pick up transit. And I keep thinking of how many people probably come out of New Hampshire to work and, you know, or maybe we would go up to tax-free New Hampshire, but anyways.
Appreciate that input. Why don't we go on to the next slide, Gabe? And congestion, certainly congestion in Holden that we've talked about impacts Rutland. I think you might have a small dot there in the center here and of course that's with fifty-six and one twenty-two A activities. Thank you. But you can see throughout the city, the surrounding ring towns of Worcester and then particularly the Mass Pike Corridor, parallel Route twenty. If something happens on the Pike, people are jumping on twenty in Sturridge, Charlton, Oxford and causing difficulties for those communities as an example. But congestion, say in, I had a highway super in the rural area tell me many years ago, it's really pavement condition in bridges here in this particular region. I think it was New Braintree he was telling me that, as you can see. So not as much congestion, but we do a report every one or two years regarding this. What is, say, the level of service, that report card grade of how different critical intersections operate or how various roadway segments operate. And we look at, to say reliability, you could have a reliable segment that's reliably congested every day, for instance. It is the way it is. But we look at park and ride, transit on time performance that is shown there. But let's see, Holden where the, their TIP project will be focused on, will, will address the documented congestion in your neighboring community. While we move on. Asset management here again, pavement, sidewalk. We're doing traffic counts all over the region, about three hundred each year. Turning movement counts at the intersections to see where all the cars go. Janet had mentioned some of the studies we do. We have done a Route one forty corridor profile study back in twenty eighteen. That was looking at West Boylston, Boylston, Shrewsbury. It looks at, say, the major management systems that I mentioned before, a host of other items, including environment and such. And basically we come up with a listing of suggested improvement options for the communities. This was after actually an earlier study that we did, I think, between two thousand nine, twenty-eleven was one forty, working with Monmouth Chase Planning Commission. 140, working with Monmouth Chase Planning Commission, we looked at 140 in Westminster, Princeton and Sterling. And Princeton, they did, they just went with the study, hired up a consultant and, and that led to the improvements on 140, particularly through the East Princeton Village that was difficult to negotiate and the neighbors, the butters, had a lot of difficulties with the trucks two feet from their front door. And so that, they were able to calm the traffic through there, a tremendous amount of public participation. So we, we do studies like that that can emanate from the long-range plan. Next slide, please. Resiliency, this is again, the culverts that have been identified, some of them have been inspected, I think DCR was inspecting them around the Watchuset Reservoir there, and so West Boylston was able to benefit from that, the state effort to protect that water supply. But, you know, glad to hear works being done in Rutland, but there's again others that we can, we have a program that we can work with the towns to assess their culverts and provide a plan of action. So let's see, I think West Boylston was mentioned there on the lower left. Next slide, please. Decarbonization, this is with the electric, electric vehicle charging stations here and, and right now, there's about 164 in our region. You can see there, Worcester-centric here, Route Nine in Shrewsbury, Westboro and such, Auburn, along the corridor there, but if there's gonna be, you know, the projections for more electric vehicles, we'll need more public charging stations, certainly there'll be the infrastructure at the people's homes and other dwellings. But as was mentioned here by the board and others, that can, can the grid handle this proliferation and what improvements will have to be made? And so you can see the interaction here, providing these vehicles, but can the, the grid handle this and what challenges will we have in the future? Next.
I noticed Rutland has no dot at all.
Well, you know, I think about that and I think, you know, I commute into Boston. I, right now, I'd be very concerned with having an electric vehicle and making that commute.
Range anxiety.
So, I mean, it's great for local and you could have it for local, but there are a lot of people that travel great distances to go to work still from, from.
Did one show up on that, on the map?
No, that's the arrow, that's the mouse. And I think there are more and more with the farm businesses in town, the agriculture businesses in town and even the rail trails and everything, we are seeing more people come to Rutland for activities, especially on the weekends, and to have a charging station for their vehicle or multiple charging stations for their vehicles also, that, that piece of accessibility.
Creating communities grants are an opportunity for them.
And there is a dashboard, I don't know if it, on the CMRPC website, should be fairly easy to find, that has a tremendous amount of information on EV. And.
Operations and.
Yeah, but, yeah, whole range of information on that that one of my colleagues had put together. Next slide, please, Gabe. The emerging technologies and such. Let's see. Well, experience in transition from an auto-centric approach to a human-centered transportation network. And you can see some of the examples that we put together here, micromobility in the, in the cities. Janet had mentioned the microtransit that's been put together, so I think that's a, a map of the.
The VIA.
The VIA system, yeah, okay, that WRTA is associated with there. And again, their perhaps shuttle service from the town to the city on weekends is a pilot, could be, be something that could be explored here based on some of the comment. Let's see, next slide. And again, numerous funding opportunities. If we hear from the board and the stakeholders, public, what the needs are, as I mentioned before, we can try to equate them to the funding opportunities that are there. A lot on the national level here, I mentioned some of the new programs with EV, promoting resilient operations, et cetera, there. Safe streets, reconnecting the communities, that's a major program that the staff is involved in, working with the city of Worcester, trying to link, say, the Kelly Square area to Vernon Hill that was bisected by 290, so it's that type of reconnection. Rural Surface Transportation Grant Program here. Let's see, as you can see, there are others. They, on the bottom. Oh, yeah. Okay, next slide. So, you know, we can certainly help, help you with that. More funding opportunities through MASTDOT, Department Environmental Protection, DCR. And again, MASTDOT, think of the money. DEP, as we, we know from interaction, DCR, not so much. And so it's trying to even, you know, broker these groups, funding from different programs, how can that be put together to address different issues, challenges? Let's see, Office of Public Safety on the state level. Next slide, please. How do you participate? Meetings like this, you know, there's a survey that's available online here. We've been sitting down with stakeholders and having workshops much like this. Next slide, please. These are the things we've done, I've gone over them largely with you here, trying to assess the needs. And this is happening over the coming months here. Just to backtrack a little, say July, we started this public outreach. Here we are, beginning of November, we're gonna be winding that down. We get into some of the introductory and overview materials of this report, but then we'll be doing analysis come, come springtime and such. And so all these needs, we'll simply never have enough money to address them all, but we'll, we'll screen them, we'll prioritize them, we'll try to equate funding with them. And this will all get put together, there'll be draft reports, say May, released for the public review in June, and hopefully we can finish it up in July so it can go into effect October 1st of 2023. Let's see, next slide, please. And again, thank you for all your patience and discussion tonight, as I had mentioned and Janet gave, that the board can digest this, send us other input, and we'd be happy to deal with that. And I encourage you to do the survey as well. I, I guess it's pretty fun to do what I've been told. I helped put it together, but I did not answer it. And thanks for your time. I know we had thirty minutes.
I was gonna apologize.
We really appreciate being the.
It's been four hours sessions when we've done the regional, but certainly with the survey, we've had quite a few communities share them on different social media, so if you're able to do that, we'd greatly appreciate that as well. Any other quick questions?
All right, thank you so much for taking the time and I personally apologize, I didn't, I missed the meeting because I hadn't paid attention that it was four hours that day and I was not able to, to get away for that long time from my other job, so thank you for spending the time with us while we're waiting.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it very much. And I do apologize for going over thirty minutes, a lot of information.
Too much information.
Lot of, a lot of opportunities. Any follow-up questions, please reach out to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gabe.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Gabe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Be careful.
Bye, guys.
Next on our new business is property on Watchuset Road and Ridge Road. Tamika, can I look to you to explain why we have this letter? It came from, it came to the assessor's office from the Zottley, our little trust, and now we have it. Not quite sure still why we have it because it's asking us to refuse first right of refusal, but I, I think that we've done that. But the assessor's office is, is concerned that we're going to miss a window and then there could be some, some legal ramifications of that, so. Can you add any more to that to me because I know you and I, you and I have spoken about it?
Yeah, so Gary and I actually met with the assessor today evening to further discuss this and we also spoke with town council and were given some additional information. So Gary actually has all that information that he has to share with the board. Essentially, you have three options and the board just needs to decide which direction they would like to go.
Okay. Gary?
Oh, okay. So I will try to remember it if I was to say it again. So essentially, there are three options for the board. At this time, the resident has submitted this letter, which basically states that they do not wish to renew their chapter 61A status for FY '24.
Correct.
So that means that they will remain in chapter status until June 30th of 2023. At that point, they will no longer be in chapter status, but the town then has the option, should they choose to convert the use of the property, to exercise their right of first refusal. So we spoke with attorney Sharon Everett and she has advised that the town has three options. The first option would be to do nothing at all and wait until that time has expired to see what the property owner intends to do. As far as what they have presented to the town, we have a fairly good representation that at some point they do intend to change the use of the property, as shown through the A and R plan that they've had endorsed, you know, comments made at public meetings wanting to improve the roadway with the intention of there being future development at some point, whether it's them or they sell it to somebody else. So something that's important that the assessor would like to see happen is to send a letter to the property owner, just explaining that as of July 1st, 2023, that does not mean that a shovel can be put in the ground because the, the chapter is not being renewed. She would like to see us send a letter to the property owner to, to let them know, I'm sorry, last one, I can't remember what, there's a lot of information said. Eventually, that they need to notify the town of their intent to change the use. If they intend to sell it or change the use, those are the two things that trigger the town's right of first refusal. So she recommended sending that letter, which town council is, is willing to draft for us to send to the property owner. The last option would be to ask them right now to provide us with their intent to change the use at some point in the future. But if we do that, we are required to get appraisal within the next thirty days and then choose whether or not to exercise our right of first refusal. So based on the conversation, the, the strongest preference was to send them a letter just to, you know, kind of cover what MGL states as far as what happens when that chapter status expires and then what the town's rights are once that happens. But it's up to the board to decide which one of those three options you're most comfortable with.
So. You wanna say something first before I make a motion?
Is one's, we are clear on what the three options are?
I hope I explained.
No, you did, you did, you did.
I would like to make a motion, we write the letter to the Zottley people, that the town is sending them a letter. To, let me read this whole thing, do you? Town to send, send them a letter certifying that the current 61A status will expire on June 30th, 2023, however, they cannot change the use until in July 1st, 2024 unless submitted a notice to intend to convert to the town. And at time, the town will have the right of first refusal.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, this isn't discussion on, on the motion, so I just have questions, I guess. The, um, have the other boards of commissions been notified that this is the plan? I mean, it hasn't officially, nothing has been submitted formally, so.
There's nothing to notify them, so this is specifically just in, there's an application to the assessor's office and by October 1st of every year, you have to say whether or not you intend to apply for chapter status again. So this is nothing that needed to go before the other boards and commissions because that first time when you originally brought it to the town, it went through the process and he withdrew it.
Okay.
So the only thing that's gonna trigger it is if he changes. But the question came up because so much information's been presented that indicates that, that that is eventually going to be the case and we just wanna make sure that MGL is following properly.
And the town has the, I think AgCon had paid to have the assessment done originally back in, over what, the spring or summer or whatever, but that's.
That's all, that's all water under the bridge.
That, that was my quest, my next question is that that pertains to that time.
Right, so if, if we were, i- i- if the board were to make the decision to say, we would like you to, to state your notice, you know, that you intend to change the use, a new appraisal would have to be done within that thirty day window.
Yep, yep.
We could use the old one.
Okay, I just wanted clarification for, because I know it's been a lot of back and forth as far as what's been done and what hasn't been done and.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Without further discussion then, can we take a roll? I'm so sorry, I didn't even roll.
Timmy was first.
Timmy was first.
There's a, which I just had found recently, Governor Baker passed a, I don't know if it's an executive order or something, that indicates that when they, when a landowner changes that use, that the, this is to help the towns out, that it actually triggers a one-year period.
That's what this is.
That's what this says, right here.
So it would, it would leave chapter on July, at the end of, end, July 1st, 2023, but they can't change the use or after one for a year.
Oh, I didn't hear the 24, okay.
Yeah, it's the 24.
Thanks. So Randy Jordan is an Ag Commission member, I think this is great of what they're doing. Now, can someone explain to me the difference between a letter coming in and stating, hey, we don't choose to sign up for chapter property this year versus Randy Jordan forgetting to turn his paperwork in from October 1st? Is there any difference to that? Probably not.
There's not.
Right?
We know that, that's all I do, Randy.
Well, I'm asking this for formal reasons, right? So that's, that's my first question that should be considered, right? And essentially, you're, you're, you're just acknowledging that you've received this and that's a formality that they, the Zottley family had some difficulty with in the beginning days of their thing. I asked this to Gary earlier today and the Ag Commission was working on a plan to get this answered and we haven't had an opportunity to finish going through. Originally, when the Zottley family turned in their paperwork to declare that they wanted to withdraw it from 61A, it was done incorrectly, that the Ag Commission learned to physically do that. In turn, that had to reset the clock to the boards to be, to formalize. In turn, the Ag Commission and the town helped with an appraisal to, to go down that road. The Zottley family got the appraisal, thanks but no thanks, we're not interested. And in turn, the next step, correct me if I'm wrong, the next step was, the Zottley said, hey, you know, we've changed our mind, we're not gonna go about it that way, and I think they hired some different team members to help them think this process through, right? And very few people across the state of Massachusetts ever have done it like the Zottleys did it originally to withdraw. That's a pretty rare from advisors that had, had reached to us. My question for you, and maybe you feel you don't need to answer it because it could be water under the bridge, right? But I think it's a valid question to at least consider and spend a few minutes on asking the question is, when the Zottleys said, thanks but no thanks, and they withdrew their application to withdraw it from the thing, was it done properly or does the town's, if you read. the sound towns, if you read between the lines, the appraisal that was done by a professional appraiser was given, and I don't remember the number, but it was a very agricultural number versus a housing number, right? And in turn, we're able to do that from my all understanding. Do we have any right or any leg to stand on that we could possibly purchase that property because the paperwork was done inaccurately when they withdrew it? If they had gone through the process of doing the withdrawal process correctly, is the town, which was the ag commission at the time, got an appraisal done. The next process is the Zottley family gets appraisal done and naturally those numbers should be within ten percent if they're done properly on the same page, right? But they potentially could have been bigger. And then you have the opportunity to go back to a third party, right? And you could agree to agree on one, two, or the third number of the appraisals. We only got to the first number and that was our number, which they weren't happy with. Do we have any leg to stand on to say, hey, guys, you know, you didn't do this right and whatever that appraisal was, we have the opportunity to buy the property at that. Sorry, a bunch of luck. I, I think there is some merit to mine and the ag commission thinking. We didn't vote on it, but most of the ag members have spoken in the same eyes that I'm viewing this in, to the best of my knowledge. And in turn, do we have a leg to stand on? The other thing that I think needs to be said here that Bob Salterberg has brought up at our ag commission meeting is there was a cease and desist letter given to the farmer that was farming on the Zottley property. And so this past harvest season, nobody was there harvesting anything. Now, there was some controversy when that question was asked before that there wasn't only one farmer in town that had the ability to do it. Well, the one farmer that happened to do it happened to drive by and knew nothing had changed from the weeds that he had left there the year before to the weeds that is there this year. So in turn, should town council consider some of that ramifications that there was no agricultural product there in twenty twenty-two, that the assessor should at least look at and may have asked, but not have gotten that, um, cease and desist letter from the farmer that was farming there. But is that something that should be considered? It has nothing to do with the motion that's on the table, but it's something that should be at least discussed in regards to the process and what's happening.
Thank you. No, I, strangely I followed that.
I'm glad you did. I, I will.
So what we received from the property owner was a letter to the, to the town saying that they were going to, they're not going to change anything. So your point to that is they, they did in de facto change it by not having an ag product.
I think the, I think the letter that you received on September twenty-eighth is just a formality of saying, guys, we're not going to sign up for the chapter.
We, we received a lot before that. When, when, when they were saying, thanks, no thanks, we received a lot.
Oh, that was way back in the spring. Yeah.
Right. So the question then is, is that letter sufficient to, to extract them from the path we were going down?
Carol, if, okay. Randy, from understanding what you're saying, because they're still technically in the chapter status right now, there should be agricultural uses taking place on that property. And it's been observed that that is not the case. So while it may not be a technical change of use, it's still not using the property as intended under that classification. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
But that's, that's part of it, I think.
That's part of what I said, but in turn, should they be paying full taxes for last year because it wasn't used in ag use? It is a question, right? And it probably doesn't top, change their timeline of when they can physically do anything because it was in route, right? That's a legal fight that we may not choose to have a discussion on and it may be non-relevant. I'm just stating the fact and part of this sixty-one A, coming out of sixty-one A, if they're going to do the change of use, right, there is a very, the assessor can answer this far better than I can, but there are seven years or five, depends how it falls in the cycle of back taxes are supposed to be paid of residential value versus ag value, right? And does the residential, does the ag value change because there are multiple house lots that have been approved, uh, A and Rs or whatever that some of us will say that are in question because is it a road sixty-one, whether it's a road or not has no relevance. Sixty-one A property can't have an A and R approved on it in my agricultural opinion, right? And that was a, oops, we made an error kind of thing, like the cows got out of the barn before the doors were shut kind of thing, right? But in turn, that may not have happened, but did the value change right then that they got those twenty-two house lots approved on the west, uh, easterly, whatever side of that? Now, one of the comments that was written in that letter that Mr. Clark has in his hand was, you know, you, they can't put a shovel in the ground until the twenty-fourth. Define the word shovel. They've done multiple perk tests there. Even two years ago, they did a preliminary test.
Well, I would think when they send shovel, it's not to build, dig and build growth, build houses, I think. Let's be real. You dig holes in your farm, you're there all the time. And I do too. Put a post in, do this or that. That's digging in the ground.
Tough. But, you know, there's just a lot of things to think about and this is uncharted territory for the town of Rutland as a whole and there's a lot to be learned.
Okay. So I, I think a lot of this, what I was going to say afterward is that we need to be sure that this letter, if this is what we were going to do, becomes part of our procedure for six, for chapter land and for getting in and getting out that we're talking about writing with, um, that the assessor's office has started, but we need to make sure that this procedure is, and maybe even an appendix saying, this is the letter that you write when this happens. Um, but I think that we need to make sure that, to Randy's point, is once we started that process with them and we got our assessment and we provided that assessment where they required to finish that process, or can they just say, stop?
See, my problem with the whole thing is I'm in sixty-one A, so is Randy.
Mm-hmm.
If I want to get out of it, how do I get out of it? Just not send the paperwork in like you just said? Just don't send it in and oops, you know, if the assessors don't call you up and say, hey, you didn't renew.
So you're out now and we have no recourse for first option.
That's right. That's what I'm trying to say, but.
Gives a couple of things, I think that.
I think it all lays in the assessor's hands on how they want to set this thing up, even though there is date rules and regulations.
Well, I think there might be some chapter MGL that we also need to.
And I think that that was part of the assessor's want for the bylaw was to strengthen, to lay out clearly what happens and give the assessor, so the assessors feel like they have some teeth behind what they feel they should be doing and that they have kind of the town support behind it.
And also that the A and R that's thrown in there too, because that, there can be a monkey wrench in there in works.
So I think you said a valid point here a moment ago in regards to each assessor from town to town has different interpretation or due the process of doing it. You said where I farm, I signed sixty-one A papers probably on six different towns, right? And every town is a little bit different of how they get there, right? And it was a number of years ago, probably ten, in the town of Rutland, all of a sudden you needed to prove income, right? Whether you had to have a schedule F or show a check that you got from one farmer to another, right? Which, and then all of a sudden they started inspecting properties, right? So by rights, the town of Rutland assessor should have drove by Ridge Road Fields when they learned that nothing was happening and they could interpret that, right? All of a sudden you, I learned recently by accident that I filled out a forestry plan, right? Every sixty-one property has to have a forestry plan on it. Most sixty-one A property in the town of Rutland aren't a hundred percent open hay or corn or vegetable fields, right? There are, you know, ten acres of hay and thirty acres of grass. Well, that doesn't fit into sixty-one A because you can't double it more than that. Those are little things that, for another night discussion. I think the comment that I'd like to make to at least give you some consideration and zero disrespect, right, is KP Lar, in my opinion, as well as the agricultural commission opinion, right, has may have made some mistakes in this process that has misled some of the path that we have gone here. It's great that Gary has got some help from them. I'm not certain if it would be to the best interest of the board with the sixty-one A process is to potentially consider, and I believe you can do this because you have a budget for legal counsel, to consider the consultant that we had help us when we, the ag commission discussed this and her name is Janet.
Morrison.
There you go. Thank you. I was looking to our Dicky and he was having a senior moment too. But Janet Morrison is actually counsel who has actually worked with KP Lar in different situations and had, is advised for sixty-one A APR kind of thing, right? And Janet was involved in the appraisal that helped us this. And I think if you ask KP Lar, because I had a conversation with KP Lar after our annual town meeting about, hey, the ag commission's got some questions why you did things this way and we may have questioned why you did it. And we were trying to do it formally of how we were going to ask the questions and I had talked to Gary about the ag commission was going to send a letter and we just, we're overwhelmed with our plateful of doing things right now. So in turn, I'm curious to see whether KP Lar would state that, hey, we gave you some answers, but we're not a hundred percent certain kind of thing. And I think a quick call to Janet for one hour worth of her service would say, geez, they're right and don't listen to Randy Jordan kind of thing, or they're physically wrong. I don't really care what happens with this property over there. The ag commission was passionate about trying to keep it open and, and it was to the best interest of the town and a lot of people believed in that process, right? The Zottleys are entitled to, to make their money. I, I get that one hundred percent. I think the Zottleys and the town of Rutland have to do this correctly. So there's no unturned rock in the process of where they can get there is where the ag commission is coming from.
Thank you. Is there merit in taking the motions off the table and tabling this? Do we have time? I think we have time.
Yes, there's no.
So in, in, just so that we can figure out if we want to talk to Janet Morrison, which I think there's, there's something to that. She's familiar with it. So there's not a lot of, I think, what chooses at Ridge Road exactly, but overall generally, our, our chapter processes and procedures.
I think there's a lot of.
Or we can write the letter.
I think there's a lot of value to, to not rushing a letter if we're not under strict time constraints at the moment and seeking additional, because I think a little bit to Randy's point, this is, uh, the, the way this whole process has played out has been very unique and no matter what, it's going to set precedent. And I would feel better making sure that we have policy, that we're following a policy that is sound in town as well as MGL. And whatever the outcome is, is what it is, but there, there's a process there and it's documented and set.
I think we're far enough along in this that we get, get the policy and the procedures squared away and, um, we don't make a misstep on this one. But that's my opinion and Leah's opinion.
Well, my opinion is that they were honest and upfront what they were doing on the property instead of playing the game like everybody else does.
Can't speak to what everybody else does. We're talking about the one that's in front of us right now.
So I, I'm not going to pull my motion not to write the letter. If you want to do something with the assessors and that lawyer, no, fine. You can write a, another letter to them, but you gotta, you should let them know where they stand, what they're doing.
I mean, I saw the letter as just kind of a notice to them of not to take action, but I also have no problem with getting additional information. I mean, if we're not, if there's no time urgency about this, I have no problem with getting additional information. But I mean, to me, I didn't see a, a problem necessarily with the letter, but it's like you say, there's no harm in getting clarification to make sure it's the correct action because there has been a lot of missteps and back and forth in these type of properties.
Okay. Motion stays on the table, so we'll call a vote.
Clark, four.
Uh, Nichols, nay.
White man nay with her right now.
Then white nay. Thank you.
And I think if we can make a note to bring it back, I'm not opposed, I think the letter's a, a great idea. I just would rather have a little bit more information and clarification before triggering any timeline that we're maybe not ready for.
Timmy.
And then silly question, which, and maybe this is to the chair to Gary, I'm not sure. There was this discussion about the gravel road that was going in there. Where has that ended? Cause I've not seen anything in the select board's agenda or any discussion in public about what happened with that. There was some discussion that, um, Mr. Petroba was going to talk to our DPW director and then I haven't heard anything, the comment, are we going to do anything about that or what, what actually is going on? And the reason I bring it up is because being from the planning board, although I'm not representing them right now, I'm just a citizen, um, I'm afraid of precedent because we have other roads that go into gravel and our standard is, or at least the standard of DOT is paved roads. Gravel roads are really not accepted in Rutland. So that's the question I had, what is the status? Are we going to allow them to gravel it or are we going to make, if they're going to, if they're going to do something with that road, it should follow the DOT standard to be a paved road, just like any other road in Rutland that's going to be put in at this time on today's docket.
Well, we started, we start from the premise that it's still a not, not maintained road on the town's side. I know that, that, um, Mr. Petroba and I think Gary and Joe met and we did have a meeting with them. So, and it was an open meeting. We had, it is in, I don't remember.
By the, the select board made a decision at a public meeting and they, they voted on it to not allow them to continue with improving the road.
So, yeah, so it's no action at this point. It should be nothing going on with it. There's no approval.
I don't remember what the night was that we met.
Okay.
Be well for.
All right. Yeah, I'm sorry. You did have your.
Can I ask a question on the motion you just made? I did see the letter that came to you on September twenty-eighth. I'm not opposed to the letter going and explaining what things going on, but do we as a town of Rutland have any obligation to explain them, to them the process in that letter? I mean, that's probably the, the correct thing to do, but do we have, it's just like when they turned the sixty-one A paper in and they thought the time originally started, right? And it wasn't until the ag commission said, hey, wait a minute, you know, seven people were supposed to be informed of this and they didn't do that. So in turn, that gave us an opportunity to start the clock a little bit later. I don't think that has anything to do there, but my question to you is, we should know what to do, right? But do we have any obligation to show our cards to the dealer?
We could certainly.
Just something to think about.
Yeah, no, certainly bring that up with, with legal when we assemble all the questions and have that conversation.
And I would assume that the ag commission, if you need some assistance in this process of learning the sixty-one A or doing that, we could be, I would assume that we could be an assistance of the go-between or represent you if you can't go to the.
Yeah, that's a great, great idea. Thank you.
Suggestion.
Everybody that is required to get notified of sixty-one A changes should be involved in that, I think, at least in gathering the questions.
Well, yeah, we worked a lot with James, so I'm gonna, we have to.
So, so through the chair, I mean, that, that was my understanding of the purpose of postponing, putting out the letters to clarify, to make sure all the right notifications and things are done. That being, I would assume being part of it.
And if legal says, don't send that letter, don't make it part of your process, then we don't.
I think at the end of the day, CRP, or whatever, Tricia and the other gentleman who were here, I think they could be part of the sixty-one A process to go through. But I mean, there should be, there should be a potential punch list when this process comes forward, right? We, we should, we're not in uncharted territories. There's, there's a process.
Right.
And there should be a punch list or whatever you want to call it to do it.
Other towns document their procedures. We can see it online.
Oh, yeah. And I know that the assessor's office has started with, with that. So I think we're just.
Yeah, if I may, um, she has already been back to the board at her next meeting on November fourteenth.
Okay. Thank you. All right. All right. Special call town meeting, sign the warrant for posting. All right. All right. Special Fall Town Meeting, sign the warrant for posting for November 3rd. So.
Motion to sign the warrant for posting.
Whoa, hold on. I did update you on that to include discussion on the warrant article because there are some outstanding that need to figure out before we finalize the warrant. Specifically, 11, 12, 21, and the IHOP by law community is proposing a new article to be added as a discretion of the board. That information is in your packet. It was, it was paper clicked to the warrant and the front ones is revolving.
Tamika, which are the ones we need to talk about again? Sorry, 11?
We need to talk about 11. We have to decide the amount. It was the two, both of Kerry's. Number 12, because we were talking about whether or not to have them pay for the figures from the library that they got. And then number 21 was not placed in regard to the IHOP by law community.
I thought there was another one that we didn't place also. Can't remember.
I reviewed the minutes today. Do you guys have any things in front of you if you want to check that I did not sign it or put them out? Excuse me, other than the one for the town clerk's position that I.
Oh, yeah, that was the one.
Yeah, I removed it from the warrant.
Okay.
Article 11 is, was updated. We received a 9800, well, I'm going to say 9900 because it was 98 change.
So what's the dollar number you want to put on that for the motions, not for the warrant?
$9,900. Why not do the exact amount? Why do you do the exact amount? $9,897.70. Why bother putting it into a motion that has to then be brought back and all that mess? Make it straight across the board.
Karen, can you see it one more time?
$9,897.70.
And to confirm if that's going to be for the ten tables in a hard chair. And for number 12, a question came up about whether or not to have them pay for from their library account. I did speak to Kerry to ask her about the fees that they collect from printing and faxing. And she said that that money goes to the town. I checked with Becky and she said that the last deposit put into the general fund from them was November of 2020. The current balance in their gift account is about $35,000. So if that's a discretion of the board as to whether or not we'll move forward with it or if we're going to ask them to take it from their gift account, in which case we would not need this article.
I don't think people have been using the library since 2020 very much. I'm not surprised that the fees for printing and that's.
And I think people, they collect some donations, I think, into their gift accounts. So I don't know that.
Oh, yeah, this, this isn't from coffee machines.
Right, right, right.
Do we know what the last deposit was in that back then?
$150.
Kerry didn't give me how much the exact amount of money was that she.
I believe it's 997.
I was gonna, she said she didn't change. It was whatever she had admitted because the information, the less expensive one was a lower quality print and everything. So she was still preferring the higher expense one because it was a much higher quality.
Right. And so the company that she got that from is Automated Business Solutions who provides the machines for the two town hall buildings. The only thing that I just wanted to make sure of is for those two that we have, we get charge amount every month. They ask me for the total count of the machine and then they charge me. So it would just be important for Kerry to know that she would have to account for that in her budget, however much, you know, they anticipate that fees can be.
If that's, if it's not an outright purchase, I think, because I think ours are under some sort of lease or service contract, I thought. And that's why they did it.
The amounts that I get every month are based on how much is printed, both in color and black ink. It's not a consistent amount every month. It's after given the totals that they send me. It varies anywhere from $90 to $150. So that's the lease price. I believe the lease amount is a different, when I say payback, maybe quarterly. I don't think that's a monthly thing. So she probably will still get charged a hundred leases for the use of those things.
I asked her if she wanted to try to join that tonight and I didn't, I don't think I received an answer. So I think this is what's before us. She's just purchasing a printer.
Through the, through the chair. So that's probably for supplies. Like they probably automatically send ink. No?
They don't, they purchase that.
So you still purchase all, you still purchase all the supplies and you still get charged for the copies?
So I'd want to know, I mean, this isn't about this, but I would want to know what the contract is that we're paying that in addition to, because that's usually like a per, either go towards the upkeep or for supply.
Right. So they're usually monitoring and automatically, you know, sending what's, you know, because they can see if there's low ink.
And then, I need one.
So just to confirm, the board is okay with needing a place for that dollar amount?
Um, for yes. I, I do.
Are you talking, are we on 21 or are you talking about the?
12.
Okay.
Yep.
No, it's okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think the department had put it, the request in with some justification as to why and then can ask the voters if they think that, you know, ComCom will discuss it and make their recommendation and then we.
Tamika, could you get that information for us for Thursday? If this is a contract, if there is a monthly fee, if there is all of this, because that isn't budgeted, that will need to come from somewhere and that will affect everything.
Yeah, that's why I brought it up, only just based on my experience with companies that have the most stupid thing that sometimes it's not as, you know, it's not just that one and that.
Article 22.
21.
21. Thank you. So this was about the revolving funds and the conversation that we had regarding RDIC and/or HPDD. And we have found out that because HPDD is basically put in place by RDIC, that any, even though RDIC does not do the actual permitting, HPDD is doing it on behalf of RDIC. So if there is any authority that should be receiving a revolving fund, it would be the RDIC. And then they would get the permitting done on authority of the RDIC. So that's what's before the board, not to have both of them, but the RDIC.
And I.
And the ortho, yes.
And I think that that was our question was if, if it was RDIC, could then HPDD be the ones that are essentially spending the money, like how that legislatively would work?
They have to, going forward, they need to spend the money authorized by RDIC. RDIC needs to start, if, if they're not, I apologize if I'm saying start and that's a faux pas. But they need to be working very hand in hand with RDIC. And RDIC should be signing off on things, approving.
So they'll have control of the funding.
They should have control over the funding. We talked with KP Law about it. We also talked with Becky about it. And while we don't completely understand it, it is the right thing to do. So because that one was not placed, we do need to make a motion to place it.
So moved.
Second.
And further discussion? You'll call?
Glock eye.
Nichols, eye.
Whitman, nay. It was number 22. I thought that we were going to ask, we asked for town council to have clarification on if.
I have that today.
Yes, I remember it was placed and we did get clarification from him. The $8 amount needs to be included in the motion. It's not required in the warrant. We can put it there and it is acceptable to put not to exceed $800,000.
Okay, I think I still have questions. I can, just from the funding source, because if it's to borrow versus to borrow and then with the hope that then at the next town meeting, town meeting would vote to essentially pay that borrowing off with free cash, it's a two-step thing.
Doesn't that kind of go with temporary borrowing anyway? So once temporary borrowing is done, you have to pay it out regardless. So then you.
Most of the time, I think temporary borrowing, I don't know for sure, is still approved as it would hit.
I think this is approving temporary borrowing.
We usually do temporary borrowing and then there is a, a way that we're getting that. So we do a temporary borrowing because we're waiting for the state to send us the money for this.
That we know it's coming.
We don't know how we're going to pay this.
I mean, we hope, we have hopes that this is how, that there's a lot of things that need to fall into place.
September's gone, October's gone, and there's still not a date. So let's not hold our breath.
And to my point, that when, if, when that comes in, it still then takes another town meeting vote to, vote to move that from free cash to.
And if they say no, then we need to have a method to pay this.
Right.
I know that it was brought up by myself that a tax calculator should be put up on the website. I did not see that because this will be something that will affect people's tax bills.
If it, if it.
If it passes, it will affect. People need to be aware of this and it should be dropped, in my humble opinion. I don't think it should be dropped on them on the 17th. It needs to be out there now.
I don't think the intent is for it to impact taxes, but it very well could. Because I think the intent is that it would be temporary borrowed until there's free cash available and then town meeting would vote to, to essentially reallocate that amount from free cash.
But you've got to go through that whole process.
I understand. I'm, that's, I think.
But, okay, so now that falls apart.
Right. No, that's.
And we don't have enough. Now where are we going? We can't say that that, because it's not in our hands as of yet.
Right. No, and I, I'm, I'm saying.
I, I just think we have to make people aware that this very well can hit their tax dollars.
We, we had discussed putting out something as what, what an impact it would have, should it be done through levy.
Yeah, so. I also think it should be up on the website so that people who have, because you put a $350,000 home, well, I don't think that's the average home price anymore in the town of Rutland. You know, people on fixed income should know what it could potentially hit them and people who, you know, all of that stuff. I don't know if it was here or something else, but whatever tax calculator I used, you actually put in what your tax is so that it wasn't just based on an average. So I know there's a way. I understand it, but a footnote, a footnote could only be based upon the average. We've, in town, when we've done a footnote, it's been the $350,000 home. And I know the calculators are, you type in actually what your home is. So that way you can find out what it really is going to hit you. Right. Okay, so we have the 800K. We can put that.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed. We can put a calculator on the website. I would actually send it, not just the website, I would send it last. And we've got to figure out other ways to get it up there, Facebook or something, because not everybody looks at the website, not everybody looks at the sign, not in, we can't, it's not one stop for everybody. We've got to try to find all of the avenues. So, but we will do that. So we place the article. We're just getting clarification, right? So is everybody happy with that?
Did that answer your question, Leah?
Yeah, yeah. I couldn't remember. I knew that we had a lot of conversation about that. I couldn't remember what the final outcome was, if it had to be placed, please. Thank you. And sorry, I missed the email. It must have, I mean, I think I saw it, but.
I just, I just looked at my email. That letter that went, that Carol spoke of will be in our hands for Thursday?
The letter for what?
The notice that was explaining that 800,000 from legal?
I sent that to you this morning.
Okay. So a lot of stuff going on. I'm just trying to. So we need to vote to sign the warrant.
Well, do we see the?
There's a new article, sorry.
I asked Nida if we're allowed to do that. She said the Select Board is within your discretion to please not go after the warrants and close. This is a housekeeping warrant article?
It's at the end of the package.
It was, um, people click to the warrant?
I emptied a click.
I don't want to come across like a total brat, but I'm kind of not loving the idea of starting to add articles after the warrant's been closed.
I don't understand, like if we close it, why would we, we would consider adding?
Right.
If that becomes a, you know, bad practice, but.
Because I feel like then maybe other department heads or boards and commissions had something that they missed the warrant deadline. It would, I think it would be one thing if it came before the board kind of as an, like a absolute kind of this needs to be placed, we need to take care of this versus something that's coming. That's my personal take.
No, I, I agree. I agree. All right, so.
And I, and I see where it's coming from, but I don't think it's urgent. And I think it's set in a precedent that I'm concerned about. So I don't know, but I don't know that it has to be addressed right now.
Is my understanding that this came about from the discussions that were had on other articles for blue town council regarding the revolving account? And that's how this transpired?
Yes, Peter.
Peter Krynne's way. So this is actually something I would urge you to place. This is going to have a significant impact on some bylaws and it can, the longer we delay, the worse condition some things in town are going to be. This is to, this is, as Lauren suggested, it's, it's housekeeping, but it's very, very important housekeeping to the town government. And this only came up because of the bylaw reviews, actually. That's what started this.
So this is, I thought this was still kind of in, in the state as far as, this is talking a lot about Board of Selectmen and Select Board, right? The terminology of it.
Yeah, some, some of that is actually not important language because we have, we have, we are dealing with that in the bylaw review to completely eliminate Board of Selectmen and completely replace with Select Board.
Right, because this is still like in the state, right? Still being, it hasn't even come through as a permanent change according to the state.
I thought it had to be a home run petition to change the name at the state level.
I think the state is in the process of making a change that referring to them instead of Board of Selectmen.
They are. I do not know what state that is.
It's close, but it's not done.
They've been talking about it for a couple of years, but I don't know what the current state is.
I think it's in legislation, but it's not been completed. So I'm.
So Peter, can you explain what this does? I, this is the very first time I'm seeing it. So versus what we have already?
Okay. It all starts in 2000 when the Attorney General's Office took a, started taking a more rigid approach to governmental structured changes. And so when the town in 2007 voted. And so when the town in two thousand seven voted to go to a five-member select board, that was done without special legislation. And the Attorney General never noticed because there was never a bylaw change. Said, so they were never notified, so they had no opportunities to say, hey, you need special legislation of the a- of the a- um, you need a special act of legislation. So this is to, thi- this, there's a very practical element that Lauren says, if something looks like a duck and quacks like a duck and acts like a duck, it's a duck. And so from that perspective, the Select Board today of five members is a duck. But the others, someone who's going to be very, very, who wishes to be very particular about the structure, who says there is no act of, in the legislature that enables this, it could call into question. So this is to clean that up, clean up actually a couple of different, uh, uh, town meeting actions. Together are all put together in that board, excuse me, in that, uh, proposed legislation. And also ratifies that every action taken by this five-member select board and the Board of Public Works and everybody acting together, that they're all valid actions.
In the relationship between the Board of Public Works and Select Board has not been solidified, that to bylaw?
No.
I s- I still struggle, I, I still struggle with the timing of it, I mean, I... I, I don't, I don't know, I... I struggled with the timing of it before, I knew what it was, and now knowing what it is, there seems like some sense of urgency, but this is the very first time that I'm seeing it, so, um, I, I get, again, I still struggle a little bit with the precedent of studying, why do we need to close a warrant if we're gonna just not leave it open until...
Could I ask a question? So if this isn't placed, it isn't voted favorably, would we go back to a three-person Select Board instead of five?
That is not clear to me today.
Okay, my other question, to help you Selectmen do some of your thought process, right? When was the warrant closed and why wasn't this presented before that? Is it lawyers, you were still learning, I mean, is there a legitimate excuse?
We literally discovered, we've been discussing the Board of Public Works' Select Board relationship in, in legal review of the bylaws. Last night was when we discovered that we needed a special act of legislation.
I, I think they needed to hear that, Peter, that's all.
That's fair.
That's why I asked a question.
Also, if I may, through the chair, Peter, that was approved by a town clerk and was stated that, that in fact can be done.
Yes.
Also, if I could ask one more question, um, about when you went from a three to five member. What, if any ramifications would there be if any of those decisions were found to be not valid?
Worst case, every decision made by the Select Board and the Board of Public Works since two thousand seven are invalid and therefore every rate change, every appointment made by either body is invalid. That's worst case, and, but...
Okay, but I just wanted to ask, but I should also let everyone know as we discussed earlier.
So through the chair, so this is like the clerk opinion or we have like a legal opinion that that this is, has some kind of an effect on the board?
That is from town council to fix the problem.
So, oh, this is from them, directly from them?
Yes, that's straight from Lauren's email.
Could have started with that.
Sorry. Yeah, no, this is not something, this is not something that even I would have on our, ourselves.
Well, well, no, I mean, it, it looks like you discovered and, and made the proposal. I didn't realize it had at least gone through town, um, through councils, so. But I still have a concern like Leah does, but also I have a concern if town council has made a review and recommendation that whether we should consider it.
Uh, how many town information sessions will there be before the seventeenth meeting to get the word out? Because this is a pretty major thing. It shouldn't be, I...
That's, that's not up to me, I'm not, I mean, yes, I was involved in talking to town council, but town council presented it as is, I don't know who's going to do it and when.
Public hearing you're talking about?
Public information session, so that people can ask questions, so that we're not sitting there until, you know, two AM discussing it. Um, these bylaws have been in legal review since last spring, I don't understand how they could have been missed.
I think regardless of that, I hear you, um, I'm thinking of worst case scenario. You said that everything could be thrown away, um. I completely understand the timing of this. I'm concerned that if we have this before us and don't do this, um, somebody could come in and say, you knew about it, you didn't do it, and now we're gonna retroactively look at everything that you did.
So through the chair, I mean, I, I think we should post this and that, that, at the town meeting, we, we'd expect the town council will explain the significance and the reasoning for this, since they reviewed it and made the recommendation.
You would hope so.
Well, I, yes, I would, I would look to them to be answering.
That's if we agreed to put it on. Don't worry.
But it's also swear, where it was last minute, it really should be posted and, you know, made, people made aware, just like the, uh, the borrowing situation, make sure people are aware of the change. But I, I, and like I said, I, I don't like the timing of it, but I also see the significance of it, so.
So may I make the motion to post this article on our warrant?
I'll take, I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Clark, aye.
Nichols, aye.
Whitman, aye, can you please make a note that I don't want it to be made a precedent though? That this is like a, the urgency kind of trumps the precedence of it? Thank you.
Eppenoy, aye.
And then, you know, also make sure that we post it and bring attention that it was in the condition, so that anybody that reviewed the warrant would be aware. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, the, um, Economic Development Commission, um, the reason why this is on our radar is because it seems to have, seems to be an inactive, um, commission at the moment, yes?
Um, it's being suggested that perhaps that housekeeping article should be Article One.
I hear, I, I think I understand that. Okay.
So we have to make a motion to re...
But does it, does, I, it's, they can be reordered any time, they can be reordered any time. I guess my, I, I hear that, but I guess even though we, even if we took positive action on this at town meeting, it's still not going to be for like three months, three mo- four months, right?
You, madam, are an optimist.
It's, well, but it's got to go through everything, so is there any legal...
It has to be an act of the legislature, which means we need to get legislator in the, in the House and the Senate to propose it, which will not happen as we're so close to the end of the ca- the legislative calendar. So it's not even going to start until sometime next year.
Uh, our specific one going to them is not going to happen until, is that what you're saying?
It will not be entered into the legislative calendar until sometime next year. And then it will take, uh, roughly, I've been told, a year to complete the process.
So at least maybe we'll have covered our behinds on it. I think, I think, I think the rationale is that everything, we do it here, it gets, if it gets approved, everything else is valid, and if it doesn't get approved, three members walk out, I don't know. I don't know, so I think that's, I think that's the, the reasoning for it, and I think it's valid. Unless somebody else thinks that there's a...
I think we should ask the attorney to tell us what the percentage is of actually the state giving a crap enough to go back from two thousand and seven to now to, of everything that's been done by this, uh, by the Board of Selectmen. I mean, truthfully, I think the government has a lot bigger fish to fry.
I was just saying, if somebody, if somebody, if somebody grabs a hold of this and wants to push it...
Right, we, we, we basically should decide to take action.
But I don't think it needs to be line one, I think it could be the last one. And that way it shows that it was the last one, it didn't come in in a timely fashion, it shows that. It's important to place the things that usually happen, that people are here for, you know, and then... I just, I would just make sure that Lauren's prepared to answer those questions because it seems like, oh, 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 doom and gloom, but, yeah.
Um, if I may, it will likely not be Lauren, um, because I mean, it's, it's likely going to be another person, she's not able to make it.
Correct.
Just to throw that out there.
All right, we'll, uh, have a conversation with me to...
Do we have to go back because the board didn't make a motion to sign the warrant?
Oh.
When the motion was made, it's...
Yeah, yeah, but we, we need to sign the warrant and so...
Right, I started it and you reminded me, thank you. Motion to replace the article, please, or replace the warrant, sign the warrant?
So moved.
Getting too late. Any discussion? Roll call?
Clark, aye.
Nichols, aye.
Whitman, aye.
On to a nine o'clock and I'll have a brain in here. Economic Development Commission, as I said, it, it appears to us that there has been no activity on that since August? So, yes, sir.
I just, to make you just scared the living daylights out of me that we're gonna have an attorney show up that might not know what's going on with Rutland, who's gonna represent us during a, a meeting?
No, 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 they, they, they would be well versed in what they know about this, um, since we notified them when the date was placed.
Okay, I just...
So this is not, it, there's no requirement that Lauren is the only attorney that knows what's going on. So that anybody that comes would, would be well versed in what's going on.
Okay.
It, it's not a last-minute thing.
All right, because Sharon and Lauren's the only one I've ever known that dealt with Rutland, unless there's other ones, somebody else has dealt with it.
Dave Jenkins has been here before.
He's good.
So as you said.
As I said.
So were the, were the, are you talking about the Economic Development Committee?
Yes, the Economic Development Commission.
So we, we canceled one meeting and last meeting didn't get posted because miscommunication with the secretary and myself on that. So there has been two meetings that have been inactive yet. That was Au- that was October and September.
Okay, so... To be fair, you've been, I, I thought, I understood that you were reaching out to people to try to find out?
I had, I had reached out specifically about the member that was in, or the president that was interested in becoming a member.
Okay.
Um, but it's not here back from anybody, um...
So you haven't had meetings because they weren't posted, or that's...
October was canceled last minute because two or three of us were unable to come. And November, uh, October did not get posted because there was a Monday holiday in there and we missed it, so yes. I'm aware of the resident, Sabrina, I believe, who was posted, and she has spoken to my wife a couple of times about what was going on, so. I have communicated back to her in an official capacity.
She's, she's very keen on seeing if there's a place for her on that commission, so.
Through the chair, can we suggest to the chairman of this Economic Development Commission that a member of their board should be resigned because they do not, no longer been down?
So your alternate Bonnie needs to be...
Yes, she has already done.
She has done, so, thank you, all right. All right, so let's, uh, as far as I'm concerned, then we don't need to...
Could you, as Select Board, appoint her?
Not until you make a recommendation.
You need to make a written recommendation, written recommendation, we need her letter saying that you have her letter.
Well, we have, we have to have a committee meeting to vote on that.
Right, so your committee has to recommend us return to our board.
Um, if I may, I think there's, I know a couple of times I've sat in on economic development, it's been a little like, I think you guys kind, if I don't want to speak for you, but I got the sense that there was a little bit of conf- not confusion, but just like, how do we get started, what do we do, like, what are the priorities? Is there funding available because some of what we really, our top priorities need some cash infusion that we don't have and...
Our, our last few meetings, I think we focused on, you know, helping with the website and going there. David George is making more of an effort to be here, he was here at the October meet, or the...
August meeting.
Uh, he was here at the meeting that we didn't have, he didn't get a notice, so maybe cancel it within the last few moments. And in turn, um, he has had some emails with us recently in regards to possibly joining with other communities in regards to joint grant writer kind of thing, and I think we got some traction there. Um, one of our members, um, is working on a grant to possibly help with the up- upgrade of the website that we had spoke to you a little bit about, so I think we're, we, we still don't, uncharity, territory for us, we haven't had a lot of communication with other towns in the same situation that we have, but David has helped with some of that and there's a regional lady that comes in and advises us a little bit, so.
I was just, the reason I was asking is, I think Janet, um, had mentioned something about an economic development grant, um, that Rutland was putting in for, not community compact, but something else, a shared regional position. So I wanted to make sure that that was, you know, and I think some of our goals and objectives as a board, we need to be better about, you know, working with our point of boards and commissions especially, but the other elected boards also in making sure that they're supported and everything, so.
And Tom, and Tom is on that board now, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It, it, I don't need to tell you folks up there, it's very challenging for any board to, to make time with, you know, how many different directions can you physically go in? That's the challenge that we all have and then, oh, and can all five of us be available on, uh, second Tuesday of the month? You know, it's just, it's sometimes challenging. If we had a little bit more guidance or, I won't say a secretary, but somebody within the town that helps write some letters or organize things, it may be easier for a committee like that, more so than like the Ag Commission. We, we can handle things ourselves on the Ag Commission, but this economic development, we need a little bit of guidance. David George, God love him, but his play, in my opinion, is, is bubbling, right? He, he's a wealth of knowledge, but he can't help do everything that we potentially have the ability to do.
And I think that that was some of the concern when, um, forming the Economic Development Commission, even before anybody was actually on, was, was it more of a visionary board and then there would be other, like, additional people to kind of be the doers? Or was it a board that was the visionary and the doers? And I think the, the composition of the board is, makes it tough to have a whole lot of doers because everybody is so overwhelmed with, every, everybody is very active and involved in all aspects of, of their lives. So I think that it's, that that's a tough piece, so it's growing pains for us.
There are comments that you hear around town is, you know, what is our purpose? We don't have necessarily a mission statement ourselves within what we're doing. Some people will say, well, why do you exist versus the RDIC, what's the difference, right? You know, if we had a own business association, would it do the same, right? So there's a lot of uncertainty of our existence.
So through the chair, so these bullets, so that it has a list of what, of charges for the, for the committee. So it spells out a lot of the, the areas that I think, I'm not sure who, who developed this.
Do you have this, Rinae?
That's Ron, I may have not seen that.
So it talks about a lot of the expectations of the things that the committee might be looking at and addressing. I, I also see that it says that there should be a, a member of the planning board on it. Is there any member of the planning board on the committee?
Or they're designated, I think there was a conversation at one point, I was on the planning board meeting, whether or not they could, they, none of them felt that they, at the time, none of them felt... they, none of them felt that they, at the time, none of them felt that they could take it on, but similar to us, at the time, we didn't have a a member representative, but there was a designee, so the planning board could make a recommendation.
But they ha- but there hasn't been one, right?
It's David George.
Oh, is it David George? Is that his role?
I I don't think he officially was on it because he has so much other stuff on his plate that he helps as he can, but I don't think that he's not, I don't think he's a voting member. I think that that, we were really trying to keep them as town members, and Ron kind of really pushed that we have the one member as an ex officio, um-
Non-resident.
Non-resident member, um, but yeah. So then I think there was some, at one point, conversation as to if select board had more more interest than and could maybe recommend that planning recommend someone, or or how that would, that weird convolutedness.
I I think if you wanted to have a joint meeting with the select board, I think at least we could probably get a quorum, maybe not everybody, but probably a quorum to sit down with you and and rejuvenate a little bit.
I think some of it is tough for us as far as meetings, but also for them as far, as far, you know, at EDC, but yeah.
But we either need to do it then, or or figure out that it's not gonna-
Right, right. Or maybe we can try to join, make it a joint meeting with their next scheduled meeting, and then, or something, I don't know.
So do you have, you don't have a scheduled or planned meeting at this point, yet?
We meet, um, it's actually, it's it's actually the, it's the second Wednesday of the month. I agree, it's the first Wednesday of the month, I believe it's the second Wednesday of the month, and it's, but sometimes we miss the posting because of the holidays. And Jessica, who is not a town resident, but she's on the committee, she has helped with quite a bit of that stuff. Correct, that's why we we made the error, and then we we openly talked about, um, going the following week, even though as it was posted, we were okay to do that. I had it on my schedule to go, and Jessica went out of town and didn't post it, so it was, again, I didn't follow up on it, so. We have the same problem.
Wednesday morning, Monday morning, is that is that time wise work? For for a Wednesday, posting it on Monday?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant for the meeting, I was like, oh, well, we-
No, so for a Wednesday meeting to post-
Right, we have to post by six P M. on Monday.
So-
But the issue is if Monday's a holiday.
Right, but I'm thinking if we can at least maybe get to November one.
Well, the other thing, the other question that I asked, um, that I asked the other day was, you know, can we post now? You know, if we post two weeks ago, man, I was unaware of that, so.
Oh, you can post early.
I mean, we can, we should probably just post every meeting, just don't have an agenda, just update it, right?
Well, you could have, like, a basic agenda, right, typical items.
Yeah.
And then you can adjust them even.
Right, we can update them.
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright, okay, anything else for EDC? Town administrative position, discussion of a search firm for permanent T A. To me, um, to me, it was received from Leah. We, three, um, companies that will do this, Municipal Resources, Collins Center, and Community Paradigm Associates. I didn't, I I misspoke, it's not that they have agreed that they would, they are people that Leah has reached out to. And that are, have expressed an interest in.
My my rationale for these three was, these are all three that the town has worked with in, to fill previous positions. Um, Community Paradigm Associates in the Collins Center, both for previous town administrators. Municipal Resource, um, Inc. for, um, public safety positions.
Public safety.
Yeah, they were, no, they were involved in the police chief-
No, it wasn't, it wasn't more than within.
They were in- Right, I think that they said that they were consulted for, they've also provided police chief and fire chief assessment centers. They did I D P W search for for Joe. So the town has a history with those three. That was my rationale for reaching out to those three. I had said that I would happily reach out to additional if anybody provided me anything, and I didn't hear anything from anyone, so.
I'd like to talk to Collins and Community Paradigm Associates.
Now, when speaking with them, would they come in and, to a board meeting and speak with us?
Nobody wants, wanna do it an off night. Cause they carry on for a half hour now.
Right, we'd have a special meeting.
So the way we had done it in the past was, we had kind of interviewed a a few, a couples, a few, maybe these three, um, search firms on an off night, um, and asked that they hold like a thirty to forty-five minute presentation. And then we, as a board, make a decision as to which firm to move forward with, and then provide them, um, you know, then they work with us to get our community profile.
Give them guides to what we're looking for.
Right, and then depending, um, I think Community Paradigm and Collins do similar to what we did when, um, with Mike Nicholson, is we basically said, you do everything and bring us the top three to five candidates that you think have background checked and everything would be a good fit for us. And then, and then we interview them in an open meeting. Um, I think MRI is who Hubbardston just used, and I think Seth spoke to that a little bit, as far as they would do that. They also have another option where we could appoint a search firm of community residents, of department head, or residents. I'm not exactly sure of the makeup, I think that we would have that discretion to to that makeup. That search firm would work with them directly to then bring forward the top three to five candidates to the board. I think that that's something that if we had all, if we had one or two of them, or all three of them in, we could ask them specific, you know, those specific questions. I don't want to speak, um, or or anything. All three of them, at the time, when I had emailed, um, I think it was back in July originally, um, had said that they were looking at, from the time that they're hired on till the time that they bring forward a candidate was in the sixty to ninety day range. I assume that that has maintained, kind of, and they, all three said that they would have the capacity to take on Rutland as a a community seeking, um, at the time, if so.
So I I don't see any reasoning why we wouldn't listen to all three of them. You know, like, give them all half an hour, and then have a half an hour for discussion afterwards, so that we're not, you know, we're not here until ten o'clock at night, at least just to hear what they have to say and offer.
Yeah, and I don't disagree. I mean, I think MRI has a little bit of a different, I I think all three do. I think generally, more and more communities have been going one way, that's kind of, and they know that in the past, that that's how they had done it when with the previous two town administrators, so I think that that's why they present this, but we can definitely have them in, and they can answer questions much better than I can.
Like I said, I mean, I think it's worth hearing all three of them. The the, this other one, this M R I seems like there's a lot more involvement of the town in work.
Well, they have both the comprehensive and the other one, so they do both.
Right, oh, so you can go both ways, so like I said, I think it's worth hearing, but, you know, why would we not just hear from all three, right? If we limit it to half an hour, and then we just have, limit our discussion to half an hour, so we're, you know, maximum two hours meeting or something that we can schedule.
I think, I can double check, I think I had pulled up that they were, we had asked for half hour presentations to allow fifteen minutes questions and, you know, bo-
Oh, from the board to them, yeah.
If we had them, and then conversation and after, and then we voted on which firm to enter in. I'll have to double check, I don't remember. But I think I forwarded those emails at one point.
So I mean, I I would make a motion that we schedule to meet with all three providers and-
Also, I mean-
Let me clear the discussion.
Nichols' eye.
White's eye.
Too good, I think you have all their contacts now, right? Are you okay to do that? I think it's better if it's just all through.
This joint meeting thing, do we have anything on that?
Um, I'm just gonna speak to it. So part of, part of the thing, part of the goals and objectives that we had come up with were to, um, find a representative from the select board to go to the different meetings and be there, not liaison necessarily because there would be no decisions, but liaison in the ti- in 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 information, such like Leah was speaking about, Dave George going to the EDC meetings and and just kind of bridging that that, um, communication. The other thing that, um, this, I would like this board to consider, um, is having joint meetings. Much like I just offered to Randy, that we can, um, have joint meetings with the full boards, kind of, find out what what are you, what are you doing in your committees, in your boards, in your commissions? Tell us how we can be helpful, um, tell us how we can, you know, support you. Um, so communication more with the board, that way too, that if something did come up, we would have a quorum, we might be able to make some decisions if if things were on an agenda. Um, but to sit down and have some some chats and some talks and find out where everybody's at, what everybody's doing. Um, everybody's busy, I know I try to get, I don't get many live meetings, I try to watch meetings. Sometimes it's so after the fact that it's it's not relevant anymore. Um, I know Leah does the same, I I know that we all probably pick and choose what, cause we can't do them all. Um, but we we want to get face to face time with with boards and commissions and committees. So that's, I don't know that we need to take any action tonight, other than I'd like us to try to start scheduling some of these. Whether somebody wants to come to ours, but I think it would be on an off night, um, so that that's all that it's doing. We're not really talking about general agenda items, but communication between the boards and this select board, so.
Could I make a suggestion that we send a letter or whatever to each one of the board members, boards and committees to see what their agendas look like and whether they would, whether they would attend or not?
Yeah.
An interest too.
Right, and I mean, it obviously needs to be an interest, there's, you know, there are boards that we appoint, and then there's boards that are elected, so, um, we certainly can't force anybody, or don't want to force anybody, but we want to be more visible to you. Yes, sir.
So a few years ago, correct me if I'm wrong, there was liaisons appointed from committees, and I realized that's only one person going to, whether it's the highway or the fire department or the Ag Commission, to do that. I thought that worked well, right, and that's just one person from your committee, luckily we have five maybe, uh, that that we can split up, right, to physically do that. But in turn, I felt that was even challenging for one person to try to come to our meetings. I personally think one person that chooses to try to get to those meetings, whether it's virtual or in person, is probably the best we can ask for, because of your time commitment to do it. I mean, you've been here three nights, three hours tonight already, and it's, you know, you haven't gone home yet, so it's it's challenging. I think you would be better off personally, to start with one liaison, go back to the way it was. I think you're better off to do it than have a one meeting with with five of your people and five of of the economic development sitting together. You know, there may be a time or a place to have to make meetings, but you and FinCon, that's different, right? But in turn, you know, it's nice to see maybe one of you go to the planning board, you know, and see how how they act, or or or-
We've been, that's why we haven't gone back.
That's right.
So we did talk about that, Randy, getting back to the representatives on the boards and the commissions, and I think what what Carol was trying to do was just to try to get us all back up to what's going on, and then I think the intention was that we would get back to a point where we would have liaisons, correct? And that's, that's a discussion we had that we wanted to get back to. I mean, I personally think it's a great idea, especially on boards and commissions. I don't so much think with departments, we need liaisons, they don't have meetings, and I think some people got overly involved in departments, I don't think that's appropriate. I think that should go through the the town administrator, but I think it's appropriate to have representatives on boards and commissions. That's that's just my personal opinion, but.
And, oh, I'm fine with, my concern has been in the past, that liaisons work well if there's, like, a clear understanding as to what the the goal is, and that there's carved out time in our meetings to have any, you know, any, anything that we need to discuss, or whoever those liaisons are need to make an effort to make sure that stuff gets on the agenda, or maybe it turns into a joint meeting and we, or, you know, we say, hey, AgCom, you should come in. Can you come in and we can talk about this as a joint and it's an agenda item versus a a joint.
Right, so the charge is to bring attention to the board of any concerns or needs or issues and stuff, so yeah.
And I, sorry, I agree about not getting involved in depart- town departments, because with a town administrator now, I think that that that-
You're superseding their authority, causing problems.
Just, you know, we're trying to open communications again, to make sure that everybody is heard. To skips, you know, we'll just put out a letter if somebody's not, I'm not gonna say anybody's-
So through the chair, we want to open communications, but you're ignoring Randy's.
I I, again, you're you're sitting on the wrong side.
I can imagine what it is like as a kid.
I can see out of that eye.
Ooh, ooh, I know, I know.
So in turn, right, I would concur with you with with town administrator, you don't need to go to the fire and police and the highway, right? That that's a valid concern, right, so that would eliminate some of your extra meetings to do it. Now, do you, no disrespect to Gary, Gary and I have had some conversations in regards to this. If we had a a full-time town administrator, is there a way that he or she could manage their time to possibly come to the planning board or to the Ag Commission or the economic development to convey some of your ideas to or free up some of your time? But in turn, a full-time town administrator can say, okay, hey, you know, one night a week, I'll go to something, right? And and let them come in later in the morning and make up their time in the evening to be the communication to do it. I think some of the challenges that you have with with a five-person board, right, we can have, Leah has come to the Ag Commission in the past, right? We can sit there and tell her, hey, we we think we should buy the the zonley property because of this, right? That would have been a prime example that we did this, and, uh, you know, but in turn, Leah, geez, that's a great idea, Ag Commission, you're doing a great job, thanks, keep up the good work, but now she's gonna come and convince four others to do it. So it's more challenging to take a one person's view that she has expressed from a committee to convince two of your others to follow along, where maybe in the past, it's she only had to convince one other to to go with it, with an idea, right, or or a vision, that could be challenging. So could a town administrator person potentially do that? I mean, I I don't know how other towns do it, but I'm just trying to give you ideas.
So through the chair, so I guess the point of having a liaison is that they would identify the issue and just maybe discuss it with the board or the town administrator, but, I mean, you also, you would go to the town administrator as the chair of a committee and also bring it to their attention. I just think that full-time or not full-time, I mean, we want them to do grants, we want, there's so many things that we want a town administrator to do. I don't know that going to all these boards and commissions and all these meetings all the time is gonna be the best use of their time necessarily. It certainly is important, but you also, like, if you have an issue, you're gonna go to Gary. You've had discussions with Gary, right, so you're gonna go talk to him, just like a department head or anybody else. So you're gonna talk to him as well, as the liaison's gonna be aware of some of the issues going on with it. I think it'd be difficult to commit a town administrator, regardless of that, to go to all, because there's so many boards and commissions that we would be spending a lot of their time going to that, and I think that would be difficult. And if there's, and when things come up, I think historically, different town administrators have gone to committee meetings because there's an issue going on. So I think it would have to be case by case without making a commitment, in my opinion.
I think to sum up, I think we need two town administrators, just, there's just so much to do. And all of your points are valid, and and whoever that person is, we're gonna need to sit down and figure out, what does that look like? You know, maybe going to one meeting- You know, maybe going to one meeting a week is not gonna cover the span in a, you know, they'll get to maybe two meetings a year that way if they really went to everything. So, you know, maybe we need, just need to get flex hours and look at maybe more than just one day a week. There's a whole gamut of things I think that we need to do, but.
How do all the committees of our size, I mean, how does Holden do it?
A lot of them have, I mean, if I may, from the MMA, a lot of them still do, do select board liaisons. It seems to be, and then for, you know, important issues or time-sensitive issues or something, they'll have the town administrator, town manager attend also. You know, like maybe if, for the RDIC deal or, you know, be involved in that. I think I had suggested for just getting economic development up and going, that there's a little bit more staff support to get up and going as an infusion of like an investment and then you guys are, that committee is self-sufficient. And I think if there's groups that have bylaws, you know, significant bylaws coming up or something, that, that might be an opportunity to have staff attend also. But I think from MMA, it seems like most communities do still do liaison, select board liaisons.
Is there a way that the town could get an intern position?
That's, that's one of the staffing issues that we talked about, looking into interns for different.
Interim, I think you said.
Oh, interim? Are you talking interim or intern?
Sure. Either one, whatever you wanna.
Two different things.
But, but intern.
She heard one thing, I heard another.
Assistant town administrator, right? Or an executive assistant to help with some of the committee things? Is that the, is that an avenue that you could look at? The only reason I use.
We have no money.
I was just gonna say that.
But, but in turn, by doing an intern or a school program, there could be, you know.
I, I could see that as being a good use for an intern who would help, you know, giving some kind of assistance to the committees and stuff. Because we've had discussions, we need HR help support, we need grant writing support. There's so many things that we try to get out of a town administrator now that actually a lot of other towns have separate people that deal with those issues. So I think trying to find an intern that is looking in, into those type of areas would, I think would be effective because then you have, you know, it's got to go between, between the town administrator and the committees.
But some of the interns, correct me if I'm wrong, if you go to Clark University, they have to do a part of their education, right? They don't necessarily have to be paid.
Right.
It's hard to get paid.
Right. I'd use unpaid interns for years, tons of them.
So I just, I think there's avenues there. I mean, the fire department talked about doing it, the fire brigade talked about doing it, with the charter fest, we were struggling with volunteers in doing that, right? I mean, I just, we could probably use more than one, right? In turn and everything, but I think certainly give a college kiddo an eye-opening experience in this fine town of Rutland of, of what could be improved on, you know? I mean, I, I just think there is, we gotta think outside the box. I think the road that the town of Rutland is currently going down is a little rockier than it should be. And, and I think we gotta figure out how to help us all with no money. I mean, that's, that's a challenge that we've gotta figure out how to accomplish.
And that did come out of our discussion, our group discussion about looking into different types of support, unpaid and paid.
We look at the fire and police over the years, how many people they've grown their staff from a smaller staff to a larger staff, grant writing or, hey, we'll pay for, you know, three years of two paramedics because of this or that, right? And that's, that's one person doing most of that late work with a little bit of guidance and we potentially get the right person to help us. Be similar to a town administrator. We said we couldn't have found it before the town administrator and it took us a number of years to get that position originally filled, right? And in turn, everybody says, well, a town administrator should be able to pay for themselves with grant or other fundings to come our direction. I mean, I can't answer that, but that's certainly, we don't regret with what we've done and we couldn't live without money, right? So is there other avenues that we could look at in that end of things?
I'm hoping that when we have those, these interviews with the companies, things might come up like that. All right.
So I, I don't know where this leads here. Are we, are we trying to make a decision on scheduling these meetings or?
I, I mean, unless, unless anybody's against it, I think we could just do it.
I think we should, we could send out a letter of interest to the committees and boards, like Skip said, and then if people are interested in a joint meeting, then we can start scheduling them just to, to get up to speed on where some of these boards and committees, commissions are and then go from there with liaisons.
Or even add in to our agenda how we have department head updates, board and commission updates.
Because we've invited like our IDs, our DIC, our, I get it mixed up because I have a lot of programs that have the same, similar initials, so I mix them up. But anyway, we, we've invited them to come and speak at some of our meetings just to update as well.
All right. Veterans court. I'm gonna turn the floor over to Leah, since this came from Europe.
Yeah, so Mayor Nicholson from Gardner reached out and they, the Gardner District Court is hoping, hoping to become eligible state for veterans court. Tamika, help me if I'm misspeaking at all. And this is, the state describes veterans courts as, quote, "treatments, veterans treatment courts are designed to handle criminal cases involving defendants who have a history of military service through a coordinated effort among the veterans services delivery system, community-based proviser, providers in the courts." Currently, there are only six veterans courts in Massachusetts and none of them are in Worcester County. So he's asking for letters of support from as many towns, town groups, everything in support of Gardner becoming a veterans treatment court. And that would service all of anyone that is a veteran who has a, an interaction with the court. So it wouldn't just be limited to Rut, to Gardner. Rutland residents could go, anyone.
So through, through the chair. So did, did Karen Greenwood view this and give any kind of an opinion as our veteran, liaison? I mean, did she have an opinion on this?
I didn't ask her.
I mean, should, I mean, wouldn't it be nice to know that our?
Well, this needs to be fast signed by Wednesday.
So I think Mike was.
No, I.
Yeah, Wednesday, I remember.
It's not Monday.
I think Mike was hoping to have, like I said, as much support as possible. And so it went, I think it went to Tamika and I, and I had, had asked Tamika to put it on for us to discuss as a, as a board.
I, I would just hate to all of a sudden find out that there was something that, that she might or anybody might be for some reason against it. I mean, I just, I, I, I don't know, I just think her.
Insider might know something.
Right, right. There might be something that we don't know, because this is all new to us, but I, I would think that our representative being consulted would, would be a good.
What would another two weeks hurt? Can we get?
Well, because he's asking for it by tomorrow.
The application, they have to apply to the state to become a veterans treatment court. And so they are, the application is due by tomorrow, Wednesday, November 2nd.
I mean, is it, that's short of a turnaround to apply for something?
We, we could vote to sign it pending.
Support. Confirm support.
Confirm support with Karen.
Should I make that motion?
I'll second. Like I said, I just, I'd just like to know somebody who's a veteran and has, knows, you know, because you never, I mean, it sounds fine, it sounds great, but there might be something that veterans don't like about it. There might be some objection that we may not have any knowledge of. I've never heard of it, so I wouldn't be a judge of whether it's something that.
So are we signing on to Mike's?
So I, so Mike removed that letter, but there really wasn't any where to sign it. So I created a separate document that I put in your signature folder that I thought we would attach to the letter that specifies on the board letterhead, you know, your support.
Can, can I make an amendment to it to include Karen's signature as well?
Yes, I agree. I'll accept the amendment.
All right, so that means we need to get a town to sign your letter.
I would, I would just like to have her support on it as well, personally.
Can everybody get a term enough to be able to send it by tomorrow?
The other.
We can sign it tonight and not hold it until.
Well, she, she didn't type up the page with Karen's name on it, so.
Have her send a separate letter.
I was gonna say, she could send a separate letter, she because it's.
More support is better.
More support is.
I mean, the other thing he said, let me know by tomorrow, he did say, I mean, the assumption is that he needs to have it by tomorrow.
Well, we could authorize that the chair sign for the board and that, or if he wants all the signatures, probably.
I was gonna say, I think it's more powerful to have.
Yeah, to have all the signatures on.
So I think the motion is that we're gonna sign the letter of support. We'll contact Karen, ask her, give her the opportunity to sign a separate letter.
Or a letter of incumbency or something, yeah.
If she has a concern, then.
Then we don't send it.
But how do we decide that it's a valid concern?
We'll leave it up to Gary's decision.
Discretion, yeah.
Discretion.
I just.
Sorry, but, you know, I put your head to John Clark.
Can I ask that it, that it, that Leah and Gary, because this was a question of Leah, Leah, Gary, if, if Karen has objection, then she can speak this to you.
She should consult the two of you to make sure that something is not valid or valid.
I should be available by phone tomorrow, or tomorrow.
Okay.
So Tamika, you get, you get that whole motion?
Roll call about.
Nichols, I.
Wait, my eye.
Ben, my eye.
Just, sorry, one more thing. I know we're almost done, one more thing before we adjourn.
We're not done.
Got five or six more things to go.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
This is ridiculous.
Yes.
Sorry.
Mr. Williams is the one. I feel the need to go back and visit a couple of these items. I feel the need to first, with the board's decision for the search and discussion for the, for fire and, for, I want, I want to let, and I believe the board knows how I feel about this. I also feel the need to discuss 105.
What do you mean?
Mr. Jordan, to some of your questions. My thought has been, since I came back to town, town administrator is a very, a grueling position for anybody. I've told everybody from the first department head meeting on, that I feel no one person can do that one job on their own. What it takes is complete collaboration, agree to disagree, cooperation, both sides of the coin. What bothers me tremendously, and I'm not correct in this, it's not yet, I apologize for confusing your question. What bothers me tremendously is that I've seen some of these meetings, I'm very disheartened how some folks in town would slam the office of the town administrator because it's me and also to slam the integrity of the board of selection. Nobody has approached me, my office door has always been open. I look for solutions, I don't look for problems. I can't find solutions without all of you. So I think it's, it's unfair and I apologize that I feel have to say, I have to say this, but this has bothered me tremendously since I saw some recordings of a couple of meetings. Tremendously, to the point of me taking it personal. So I think with joint meetings, I think it's a time for boards and commissions to sit down in, in their entirety with the board of selection, just to open up, like it says, open up communication, let's be forthright, let's talk to each other, let's realize and understand and solve the problem together, whatever it may be. If it's just a problem of, of members against members of certain boards and commissions, let's jump in and see what we can do. It's a, a problem of disrespect for my office because I'm in it. Let's talk about it. I've always told everybody from day one that I can remember, anything you want to say to me, you can say to me one-on-one, anything. Public forum, different story. I apologize, but I felt that that had to be said. Thank you. I think the whole board feels that same way. I know, I do, anyway.
See.
I'm just, what's my opinion?
CMR, final, final before Leah has the last word. Um, CM, CM RPC alternate delegate, request is to appoint Tim Norwald as a delegate on behalf of the planning board.
So through the chair for clarification. So are you and Dave on, on central mass planning as members or how, who's the alternative of who or you're not both on? So I, I'm trying to figure out.
I'm the delegate for you.
Okay, so Tim would be the alternative for you?
If I may make a clarification, Dick is the delegate on behalf of the planning board and Dick is appointed by the planning board. Tim is the alternate delegate and that is a select board appointment.
He's a planning board member too, so why wouldn't he be the alternate for the planning board member?
I spoke with Dave George and he was very explicit.
Because Dave George is a member, right?
No.
No.
No, no.
He's in the meetings.
Yes. For Holden.
Oh, he's there as Holden.
Yeah.
Oh, that's where I, but that, I'm sorry, that's where my confusion was. I didn't realize he was not there for the town of Rutland. He's talked about the town of Rutland.
Yes.
Okay. Because I'm there, not as a member of the town of Rutland, but, okay. So that was my confusion, I thought he was there as a representative for the town. That's why I couldn't understand how the three positions. Thank you. So I make a recommendation that we appoint Tim Norwald as the delegate, how do we put it here? On behalf of the planning board, alternate. It doesn't say that on this, but that's.
Yeah, it does.
Oh, it does in the lead, but not on the appointment. Yeah. So it says appointment.
Wait, my second.
No, it doesn't say that in the sentence that I was reading. Okay. I was reading the sentence. So I made, I made the motion. Did we get a second?
Yes.
Do we get a vote? Can you call a vote?
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Nichols, I.
And I'll just email mine through as a future budget item, so we can just be done.
Okay.
Dick Williams, thank you for doing that, you know, and Tim, because I just need somebody to step, learning.
Well, no, I understand, like I said, I, I always thought we had to, so no, thank you, Tim, I appreciate that.
Okay, there's a motion to adjourn.
Have they sat through a meeting ever?
Wait, ten seconds.
Roll call.
Nichols, I.
Wait, my eye.
Ben, my eye. Good night.
Thanks, Tim.